Yes.
Okay. Good evening and welcome. My name is Kathy Thompson, President of the Red Clay School Board of Education. The Board is thankful you have come out tonight to our regular meeting and grateful to have you here and wants to hear from you. The June 17, 2020 Regular Session of the Red Clay School Board is called to order. It is 7:01 PM. This meeting is being held electronically. On March 12, 2020, Governor Carney issued a declaration of a state of emergency for the state of Delaware due to a public health threat. The state of emergency allows public meetings of executive branch public bodies, including the Boards of Education, to be conducted electronically, either by means of telephone conference call or video conference call. The information regarding this meeting, including the information on how to access the meeting electronically, was published on the Red Clay website on June 10, 2020, under the Public Notices section. Individuals may participate in this meeting via Zoom conferencing. Individuals may speak by completing the public comment form available and submitting it prior to the meeting start. This is the third time we've held an electronic board meeting using Zoom, and we thank you for your continued support and patience as we continue to work through all the details. We learn something new each electronic meeting, and we're grateful to have Toni Clemens and Maria Stevens helping us and helping you through this meeting. As a courtesy to others and to prevent unnecessary disruption, your devices will be muted until you're asked to speak or recognized to speak at public comment. Individuals who are members of the Board will not be muted during the meeting, and they can speak at any time. School Board members, please remain unmuted throughout the meeting. In order to maximize the effectiveness and orderly of this, orderliness of this meeting, we ask the following. We will start the meeting with a roll call to ensure all Board members are present and have voice access. We will have a roll call vote for each item to be voted on. During items submitted by the Board or Board discussion, I ask that Board members indicate they have questions or comments so we can order the people to speak one at a time. Each Board member should identify themselves by name prior to speaking. This meeting is being recorded. I have to thank everyone in the district that made our graduation week so successful. You did a great job and truly honored our seniors. It felt like an in-person graduation to me. So far, we held graduations at Thomas McCain High School, AI High School, Conrad Schools of Science, the John Dickinson School, Cab Calloway School of the Arts, Project Search, and First State School. Each was a testament to the seniors and to Red Clay. We still have the Groves graduation on June 23, so please sign in if you haven't already done so before, and you can replay each on our Red Clay Facebook page and on YouTube. As always, Red Clay is leading the way, and thank you, Red Clay. So Maria, I'd like to start with a roll call member for each of the Board members to make sure each has voice access and is present.
Okay. Dr. Bohm?
Here, present.
Mr. Casper?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Dr. Newton?
Here.
Ms. Abo?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
And Ms. Thompson?
Here. Thank you. And now we do our Pledge of Allegiance. So I know we often have a flag up there that we're pledging allegiance to. There we go. Okay, you ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it was moved by Mr. Wilson and seconded by Mr. Casper. Any discussion? Okay, this one I won't take a roll call vote for, but all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the agenda is as presented. And now we go to public comment. Again, thank you for coming out tonight to attend our meeting and sharing your thoughts. Under Board Policy 2006, the Board encourages the staff and community to share concerns concerning school issues and educational programs. Sharing can be done verbally, in writing, and by speaking at the meeting. We have received many, many emails, and there are many public comments. Under Board Policy 2006, the Board reserves 30 minutes for public comment, and given that we have many more than that, I will entertain a motion to extend public comment until the public comment, everyone that signed up for public comment has an ability to speak. Is there a motion?
No move.
That's Dr. Bohm. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second is Mr. Matthews or Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so we will go through. Now, just to reiterate what I said before for public comment, everyone is going to be given three minutes to speak. You will notice that Mr. Clemens and Ms. Stevens put up a nice timer, and so you will be unmuted and given your three minutes, at the end of which you will be muted. So I just want to make sure everybody is aware of the rules, but you can't help but notice the counter. So it's very helpful. It's right on the screen. So with that said, we start with Ms. Shannon Griffin. Welcome, Ms. Griffin.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Griffin, a policy advocate and community organizer with the ACLU Delaware. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on the topic of school policing reform. I've had the privilege of working with the Superintendent Green, Dr. Bond, Red Clay Principals, Teachers, and Parents on the ACLU Fair Discipline Training Project this year. I've seen firsthand the dedication and care they have for our children. We can all agree that a safe school produces an environment conducive for learning. A common misconception is the presence of police officers and armed security guards help to make this possible. Research indicates that having school-based police contributes to making students feel less safe and negatively impacts student achievement. The recent deaths of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor illustrate that law enforcement officers may enforce unlawful use of force, creating a significant safety risk for youth at schools. In particular, students with disabilities and Black and Brown students are most likely to experience use of force at schools. These students will be far better served by the school district by divesting law enforcement officers and investing in counselors and other professionals who can better respond to their needs. Taken from the COPS Not Counselors Report, a 2018 study following the impact of federal grants for school police, 2.5 million students in Texas found a 6% increase in middle school rates and a 2.5% decrease in high school graduations rates and a 4% decrease in college enrollment rates. According to the Federal Civil Rights Data Collection, Delaware students attending schools with police were arrested at rates of 72 arrests per 10,000, which is eight times the arrest rate for students attending schools without police, which were nine per 10,000. Delaware's School Discipline Improvement Program indicates that Red Clay School District has eight schools required by law to provide specific discipline improvement plans due to disproportionality and out of school suspension. Conversely, research has shown that the presence of school-based mental health providers like counselors, social workers, psychologists, community mediators can result in positive outcomes for students and improve school safety generally. In addition, these schools have seen improved attendance, improved academic achievement, career preparation, improved graduation rates, and fewer disciplinary incidents, and lower suspensions and expulsions. We acknowledge and greatly appreciate-
Ms. Griffin, please bring your comments to a close.
-inadequacies and districts by establishing an Equity Office and partnering with ACLU and other community-based organizations to make significant changes. Removing school resource officers and constables is a continuation of this important work of building inclusive school environments that are not rooted in fear and bias, but instead nurtures and values all of our children.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Cindy McDaniel. Welcome, Ms. McDaniel.
Thank you. My name is Cindy McDaniel, Coordinator of DCJ School Offense Diversion Program, also known as SODP. Since 2004, students have been referred to our program by Delaware's Department of Justice in response to what was then an increase of student arrests in school or on school property by law-enforcing school resource officers. In short, SODP provides case management with referred students with the expectation that their first experience with court will be their last, and that they will stay out of trouble, stay in school, and graduate. And while we claim success with each completed student file, the reality is that we probably fall short of our goal. We do not always know if our students stay out of trouble, stay in school, and graduate. Many of our referred middle and high school students are having their first encounter with a police officer that leads to an arrest in their school. Just yesterday, I met again with a student who was referred in December. This student and I first met in February, then came COVID, and now we zoom through a couple of visits, and yesterday we met outside in the schoolyard. Until this incident, this student had never been suspended. The student was charged with disorderly conduct and offensive touching for fighting, which they claimed was in self-defense. Now they have a record. Their version of how it went with the SRO is this: They were pushed down and handcuffed. Then the student was held down for 10 minutes with the SRO's knee in their back. Still, the student's view about SROs and tools is nuanced. The student does not believe SROs need to be there just to be there, but they need to be there in case they're needed. This student believes school administrators should handle school discipline, and only when necessary should SROs be involved. But yes, they should be in our schools. Another student recently said that their school is a retirement school, yet they watch their SRO just sit there and do nothing. I think our students' comments speak to the much bigger issue of how exactly we practice school discipline before anyone is charged with the crime. Our just completed advocacy group includes a snapshot of data for the 2018-19 school year. Thirty-three students arrested in school or on school property were referred. One student eventually transferred to an out-of-state program. Thirty-two students participated, 26 students completed, three students did not, and three students were still open at the end of the year. Eighty-five percent of the students in this cohort identified as a race other than white. The largest group within that non-white category was black. The most common charges were disorderly conduct and offensive touching. The student referenced above is a black male. The SRO who had his knee in the student's back for 10 minutes while the student was handcuffed and faced down on the floor was white. In my work, we often talk about how race plays itself out in their school discipline experience and their arrests. In principle, I support this resolution to remove SROs from our schools based on the data, but there is a lot to unpack here, including exactly how school discipline is practiced before a student is charged, and our students need to be part of that unpacking. This is not a zero-sum game. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Okay, next up is Ms. Rashonda Pierce. Welcome, Ms. Pierce.
Can't find Ms. Pierce. She's not on there.
Not on there?
No.
Okay, so the next person is Ms. Sasha Bretzker.
Hi.
Welcome, Ms. Bretzker.
Hi. My name is Sasha Bretzker, and I am a recent graduate of the Charter School Wilmington in class of 2019. I'm a lifelong Red Clay resident, and I was a junior when a school resource officer was implemented in the Wilmington Charter and Cab Calloway campus in the wake of the school shootings that year. But I have to say that having an armed officer roaming around the halls did not make any student feel safer. I remember having so many conversations with fellow students and my peers about how it put us on edge. And this is a, I was in a school that did not have majority Black student body. It was majority white and Asian, and so we would not have been the typical target for police brutality statistically, and we still didn't feel safe with this presence. At the same time, it was difficult to get an appointment with a mental health professional in the school. And all of the statistics that have already been presented about how it's not effective in comparison to additional counseling needs to be taken into account, and SROs, this resolution needs to be passed in order to remove SROs and instead fund greater mental health and social work within schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bretzker. Next is Adressa Harrell. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Adressa Harrell, a school psychologist in Red Clay. The first reaction to the idea of removing school resource officers is often a concern for safety of students and teachers. Repeated studies have shown, however, that the safety benefits pale in comparison to the harm done to our students of color. Let's talk about the concern of school shootings. In 2018, there were four high-profile school shootings, and all four schools had some kind of armed guard or officer, and in all four, the officers failed to stop the gunman from killing. I looked at each of the 14 school shootings in 2019 that I could determine had security or an SRO. In only one case did the SRO arrive while the shooter was still shooting, and in only two other cases, they were able to apprehend the shooter before he left the campus. Active shooters in general are more likely to stop firing on their own by leaving or taking their own lives than by being stopped by another armed person. One of the school shootings lasted only 16 seconds before the armed student shot themselves with their last bullet. On a less dramatic scale, SROs are thought to increase the safety of the school by decreasing major behavior problems. Forty years of studies have shown no positive impact of school policing on school crime or delinquency. And without actually changing the overall behaviors in the school community, the SRO's presence means that those schools will report 3.5 times as many arrests as schools without SROs. So the students are acting the same. They are just more likely to get arrested for what the school normally dealt with on their own. But this negatively changes the trajectory of a student's life, doubling their chances that they will drop out of school, for example. And many students feel less safe in schools with SROs, particularly Black and Latino students and those who've experienced trauma. We also know the presence of SROs have created the school-to-prison pipeline for students of color. So the results of years of studies have shown that the unintended negative consequences of SROs is systemic racism, and they far outweigh the actual benefits of SROs. We risk the future of many of our Black and Brown students so the adults can feel safe when, in fact, the safety benefit is quite small. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harrell. Appreciate it. Next is Ms. Anne Powell. Welcome, Ms. Powell.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Anne Powell, and I'm a resident of the Red Clay Consolidated School District. As a grandparent to a grandchild with special needs, I would like to share with you some of the findings from the ACLU report titled "COPS and No Counselors." School funding that supports in-school law enforcement typically underfunds school counselors, nurses, and psychologists. With this lack of support for students and some teachers, and I quote here, "request help from law enforcement." This results in increased criminalization of our youth. Students with disabilities were arrested at a rate of 2.9 times that of students without disabilities. In some states, they were 10 times as likely to be arrested than their counterparts, end quote. Members of the Board, you have been provided with the resolution, and you have the power to make the change. Please vote yes for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. And next up is Ms. Grace Ottley. Welcome, Ms. Ottley.
Hi, I'm Grace Ottley. I'm one of the candidates running for District G, and I just wanted to introduce myself. And I work with Delaware in the Office of Women's Advancement and Advocacy. I'm also a proud ambassador for Girls Can Do Anything, as well as the Diversity Chair for my sorority. And given that I've had multiple talks about diversity and inclusion and the importance it holds to this island in a time like this, and I want to make it known that I absolutely am in full support of the Black Lives Matter movement and everything about supporting Black and Brown communities, especially when it comes to making sure they're feeling safe in their own schools. As a candidate, I challenge the system that's not providing the safety for students and making them feel comfortable. Personally, as a person of color who's gone through Red Clay system, going through Charter, I can attest to different situations that I felt uncomfortable under racial discrimination, as well as in presence of a police authority. I've had very unfortunate and aggressive encounters with one, even to the point where it hindered my educational, my learning process. It hindered my emotional aspect, and you know. So with that said, I am in support of using the funds that they currently use for our SROs to give it to fund wraparound services and mental health counselors and trauma-informed care supports, because at this point, there's no more time to say I wish something had been done about issues that have been lasting since the beginning of time. It's now's the time to figure out how to make every student feel comfortable in the school that they attend, because at the end of the day, students like me, who are people of color, we can't change our background, our skin color. We can't change our experience and change the voice. We will help fight towards changing the system, which is currently allowing for these transgressions to occur.
Thank you, Ms. Ottley. Next up is Ms. Chirito Calvachi Mateko. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. I don't believe she started yet, Toni, and the clock is running.
I'm sorry. I am Chirito Calvachi Mateko. I am calling in regard to the school policing reform, and I want to say that I support the removal of a school resources officer. I know that you agree with me that you want to have a school where people are not going to feel ashamed, but learn from their mistakes, because this is the only thing that will create a culture of peace that reproduce in the future in the rest of society. So you are very familiar now with what restorative justice is. I am a restorative justice practitioner, and we'd like to talk about the importance of that, of restorative justice in the schools instead of putting all the resources in the school resources officers. And restorative justice, the people center and those that are harmed. We know how trauma does to people that have been harmed. If they can be in the center, the environment of the school will be different. Second, restorative justice supports and for supporting accountability the person that have harmed others, so they can learn from their mistakes. And here in restorative justice, you use community. In more words, a team of teachers, administrators, students that are ready and willing to address harm through very different dialogues. And this, when they are training, they create an environment of a lot of peace. And restorative justice doesn't base in what laws were broken, but in what values, moral values, ethical values people bring to the table. So I strongly consider that you switch to restorative justice to address harm, so we can create an environment of peace where students know that they can trust their teachers, their classmates. And I know that it has been very detrimental in many ways as a Latina and for Latina students to have a school resources officers in the school. So I highly, highly strongly suggest that we are capable now in Delaware to switch to restorative justice to address harm, so we all will have a culture of peace in our schools.
Thank you very much, Ms. Calvachi Mateko. Next up is Ms. Rashima Dixon. Welcome, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rashima Dixon. I'm a city council member at large in Wilmington, and I'm coming in today to ask for your support in removing school resource officers and transferring those funds to more social services, mental and behavioral health services, as well as community interventionists, which were in the schools prior to having school officers, resource officers in the school, which worked out really well, with students knowing who their community members who were inside the building with them had also a decrease in behavior, because they knew the people who were in there helping them. So that was a huge piece. Our students are in deep need of the services and additional support, the system that could be toward the administrators' support as well as for teachers. I've seen firsthand by being the Charter School Board Member for Charter School, realizing that, as I even taught with ninth graders as well, knowing that bringing in officers just for Career Day, I had a student who hid underneath a cabinet because they were that afraid of the police. And having to figure out ways of how to, and I had students who would come in and out and will be terrified really in order to even come in and listen to an officer. So I think those things need to be built in as far as bringing in them in Career Days and slowly integrating them into the school system so that they know that they're a partner and not there just for, you know, for like students feel like they're there to lock them up, but to be there to actually be a support system to them and start to actually build relationships with the students. That way, it did help out. I've just seen that happen for our students at the Charter School. But again, I would strongly suggest having community interventionists, as well as all the social services, mental health, and behavioral health services in the schools if we are going to continue to remove SRO officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Next is Ms. Heather Van Stolke. Welcome, Ms. Van Stolke.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Heather Van Stolke, and I'm a school psychologist at Ritchie Elementary. As others have mentioned, the ACLU published an extensive paper on policing in schools in 2019 called "COPS But No Counselors." I encourage anyone interested in learning more about this debate to read it. I would like to share some relevant statistics from it. At the time of the report, the state of Delaware employed 115 SROs and security guards and 50 social workers. I'm proud to work in Red Clay, as it was more balanced than most, but there are still only one social worker and seven state-funded family and crisis therapists versus nine SROs and constables. The national recommendation is one social worker for each 250 students, and do the math on that. The following numbers are reported per 10,000 students in each state. So imagine you've condensed Delaware into a district with 10,000 students. In that Delaware district in 2018, 65 children with disabilities were arrested compared to 14 students without disabilities. Fifty-four Black students were arrested in school compared to 25 white students in school. For each 10,000 students, 266 students with disabilities were referred to law enforcement at school compared to 58 without disabilities. Data from Red Clay was not available to me at the time of comment, but as we are one of the largest districts in the state, I'm sure we factor into those numbers. And now let's look at numbers from one of the very few states to meet almost all national recommended ratios for mental and behavioral health support. For each 10,000 students in Vermont, 35 students with disabilities were referred to law enforcement. Again, for that same group in Delaware, 266 were referred. I know our safety department works hard to ensure that SROs have some level of school-specific training, and have, in my experience, always been responsive to building needs. I know many SROs work hard to deflect kids from juvenile justice. I'm sure they try to be fair, but we live in a world that puts specific children at a disadvantage before kindergarten. The most impartial law enforcement is, at best, only equipped to maintain the status quo safely, and that status quo harms students. SROs are not equipped to do the systemic and preventative work required to undo generations of inequity. They are only one tool in a toolbox, and they are duct tape on a bursting dam of trauma, poverty, and mental health needs. Only 20% of children with mental health needs ever receive care. Of those lucky ones who receive care, 80% of them receive that care in schools. Red Clay Safety, Mental Health, and Equity Committee representatives need to combine forces to look very systematically at how we use and train law enforcement in schools. We need to make sure that the budget devoted to law enforcement compared to the budget for research-supported preventive and restorative work in the context of students and families.
Ms. Van Stolke, please bring your comments to a close.
We need to make sure that those budgets are a ratio that reflects our commitment to equity and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Stolke. And next up is Ms. Sarah Stones. Welcome, Ms. Stones.
Hi, thank you for hearing my comment. I join you today as a concerned parent of elementary school children, a teacher at Wilmington University, a PTA president, the Delaware Chapter leader of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, and a voter. I'm asking that this district ensure a safe and just learning environment for every student. For weeks, America has been embroiled in yet another murder of a Black person by the police, and as a result, has been grappling with race, anti-racism, and inequality yet again. I hope this Board will take deliberate anti-racist actions in the coming weeks and months, but a statement isn't enough. We must align our policies with our rhetoric. Trauma Matters Delaware Steering Group has formally recognized that racism is an adverse community experience with generational health impact, not only for people of color, but for society as a whole. If we really care about our students of color, we must ensure not only their physical safety, but also their emotional and psychological safety in the equitable learning environment we want for all Delawareans. It is time to end armed policing in our schools and give our children what they truly need. We must show our students we support them and care for their needs. We also must teach them accountability and consequence, but the consequence for a middle school infraction should not be a but the consequence for a middle school infraction should not be arrest. It should not be a chokehold. It should not be re-traumatization that will have long-lasting effects. Mind you, we still can't prove that student resource officers are making the change they were intended to make. That data proves the opposite. From the University of Maryland, as schools increase their use of police, they record more crimes involving weapons and drugs and report a higher percentage of other non-serious violent crimes to law enforcement. Additionally, according to an analysis of federal data by the Education Week Research Center, black students are arrested and detained at a proportionately high rate by student resource officers. In Delaware, there are no state-required trainings for resource officers who might have some training, but not necessarily training regarding inequity, trauma awareness, or trauma-informed care. We know that children of color can feel traumatized by just an interaction with a police officer. SROs wear uniforms and look like police that children see on their streets. They look like police that they might not trust. Do our SROs understand the impact they have, even unintentionally, on a large portion of our population? Shouldn't our schools be a place for our children to feel safe? Shouldn't they trust that the adults in their building are there to keep them safe? Shouldn't all students trust that? Not just the white students who have never had to consider anything different? I believe that choice is clear.
I'm sorry, Ms. Stones. Please bring your comments to a close.
I'm done. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stones. Next is Ms. Lisa Elliott. Welcome, Ms. Elliott.
My name is Dr. Lisa Elliott, and I've been a school psychologist for 30 years. Although I'm now retired from regular service, I still work part-time when districts need extra help. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to speak in favor of this resolution, because this is an issue that has concerned me for a long time. I've spent most of my career in middle and high schools, including in alternative programs for students with serious behavior challenges. So I've worked with a lot of school resource officers in a lot of different districts. Most SROs seem to care a lot about the students in their schools, and I think most have good intentions. But the nature of their jobs and the nature of their training doesn't always make them a good fit for working in schools, especially in programs designed to help students with significant mental health needs. Most SROs have little training in mental health and don't easily see the connection between students' behavior and their disabilities. I've seen SROs arrest students with impulse control disorders for acting impulsively. I've seen SROs arrest students with oppositional defiant disorder for being defiant. And I've also seen SROs arrest students with special needs repeatedly in spite of the student's right to receive services. Seeing students' rights violated repeatedly by SROs was one of the factors that led me to retire early. SROs also have very little training in child development. Research has shown us that humans' brains continue to develop well into their 20s. A lot of the behavior that SROs treat as problematic is just part of the adolescent's brain's struggle to learn to regulate itself. Research has shown that efforts to assert direct control over teenagers usually fail. The best way to influence adolescents' behavior is sometimes to let them think that they are controlling you. But police officers are not trained to give up control in situations in conflict. So police are not always in the best position to do what's needed to de-escalate conflicts that involve adolescents. I appreciate that people want schools to be safe and orderly, but I also think there are better ways to have order than to have armed police in the schools. So I hope that the board will pass this resolution. And I'm glad that we're beginning to look at the question of school safety more closely, and we'll consider what we need to make all students feel safe.
Thank you, Dr. Elliott. And next, Ms. Linda Getman. Welcome, Ms. Getman.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Linda Getman with 25 years of experience, 20 of which have been throughout the state of Delaware. I fully support examining the reallocation of resources to utilize a more flexible use of funding and favor empirically-supported school safety programs. I believe we need to address the ratio of student-to-school-employed mental health professionals and to embrace a more comprehensive range of services, ensuring a balance of physical and psychological safety. Upon review of recent research and utilizing NASP's Framework for Safe and Successful Schools, a thorough approach is recommended. First, adequate accessible mental health supports. For while it is clear that most students with mental health challenges do not present a risk for school violence, of those students who do commit such an act, a significant percentage have mental health challenges. Thus, to better ensure psychological safety, it is critical that quality mental health care be accessible within our nation's schools. Second, social, emotional, and learning throughout the grades, which has been shown to both reduce school violence and have positive outcomes for school safety. Third, school-wide positive behavioral supports to work in conjunction with our multi-tiered system of support, adding universal screening to identify at-risk students early before they become too obvious to ignore. Finally, developing a climate of school connectiveness, whereby students have a positive relationship with at least one trusted adult in the building, and programs are offered, such as peer mediation, which gives students conflict-resolution skills, and the communication, anger management, leadership, and decision-making skills that will help them to remain resilient against crime, violence, and substance abuse. Students are more likely to seek help if they know that help is available. And to ensure that we are making the best use of our current resources, I would like to propose a deep analysis of the programs and resources we already have in place to measure fidelity of implementation and effectiveness. We need to determine if our funds are allocated to resources that truly make a difference for our students. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Getman. And now, Cam Henry. Welcome.
Cam Henry is not on.
Mr. Henry, pardon me?
Cam Henry is not on.
Not on. Okay, so the next person is Mr. Dwayne Bensing. Welcome, Mr. Bensing.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Dwayne Bensing. I'm a Red Clay District A voter and a former middle school teacher. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed removal of SROs from our schools. As a middle school science teacher, I had to teach my students about the scientific method. I asked that this board apply that method to analyze the data that has been provided to you and draw the logical conclusions to come to your results. SROs aren't the best resource to help our students reach their goals. In fact, as extensively testified to tonight, SROs undermine our students and our teachers' success. We know what works: Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, PBIS. This board knows it works. It's a method adopted and approved by this school board. SROs in schools is like adopting nonviolent resistance while carrying a billy club. It's nonsensical. Great teachers use PBIS skills masterfully. I've seen this. Indeed, I've never heard of a district award a Teacher of the Year award to a teacher because he or she had called an SRO, much less awarding a Teacher of the Year award to an SRO. Isn't that telling? SROs don't work. Calling the SRO meant that I had given up. It breaks down the relationship between a teacher and a student. You can no longer learn from someone you no longer trust. Our students are far too valuable to give up on. The art of teaching relies on the relationship of trust with our students. Calling the SRO also meant that I had run out of every other available option. In my experience as a teacher, never did I talk to my colleagues about how we had wished for an SRO. A call to an SRO invariably means that someone along the way, somehow, we have failed to address our students' needs. Police officers in schools are like bullets in a garden. Not only do they not help serve the objectives of the garden, they are toxic to the environment. I'm sure bullets could be used to eradicate weeds, but I've never seen bullets in the home gardening section. We know what our gardens need: sunlight, water, nutrient-rich soil, and tender-loving care. We also know what our students need: great teachers, great curriculum, and tender-loving care. I urge you to support the proposal removing SROs from our schools and commit fully to addressing our students' needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bensing. And next is Ms. Brenna Christianberry. Welcome, Ms. Christianberry.
Hi. My name is Brenna Christianberry. I'm a recent graduate of the University of Delaware from psychology. I'm here to show my support for the removal of school resource officers from schools. SROs make it easier to criminalize teenage misbehavior and typify it as criminal when it simply is adolescent behavior. Comprehensive counseling and mental health resources can take us much farther than school resource officers in terms of safety from school shooters. These funds should be used to hire mental health professionals to the benefit of the teachers and the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christianberry. And next is Ms. Lillian Oliver. Welcome, Ms. Oliver.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Kathy Thomas. So good evening. My name is Lillian Oliver. I live in Red Clay School District, and I'm a product of Red Clay School District, as well as a teacher and an advocate for the school district. I just wanted to take this time to simply say thank you. Thank you for the current Red Clay School Board for all your work and the superintendent for all your work and dedication that you continue to do. We're in a pandemic, and I realize that the tension is high amongst all officials. And with that being said, I understand that there's a lot of attention on this evening's agenda. And I will encourage all school board members to be inclusive to all ideas, suggestions, and approaches. The work that each school board member and the superintendent perform in or execute should be done to serve the children, staff, and parents of the entire Red Clay School District, and not with the mindset of self-service. I hope, as we discussed this agenda listed this evening, that all i's are dotted and t's are crossed, because the safety and welfare of our children's importance is at stake. And thank you for this time, and have a blessed night.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. And next is Mr. Samuel Van Horn. Welcome, Mr. Van Horn.
My name is Sam Van Horn, and I'm speaking in support of the proposal by board members Hope Mathews and Adriana Baum to end the contracts with Delaware State Police and Wilmington Police, that put police officers into schools and to instead use those funds to support social workers and other methods of support that would uproot children in the Red Clay schools. There is clear evidence that having police in schools leads to the increased likelihood of contact with the judicial system. It means that situations that could have been handled internally at a school as disciplinary incidents instead become criminal activity and reasons for contact with the judicial system. This not only puts all students at risk of long-term adverse outcome, but black students with disproportionate risk. According to the most recent data in the civil rights data collection obtained from the Department of Education, black students are disproportionately subjected to different kinds of discipline in the Red Clay School District. In the most recent data, black students scored 21.7% of enrollment in the Red Clay District, but were 48.2% of the students referred to law enforcement, double what one would expect based on enrollments alone. Disciplinary and judicial actions in schools disproportionately affect students of color and students with disabilities. Police officers who advise principals about how to handle a behavioral situation are more likely to resort to official legal definitions and to formally process such events. Minor problems become framed as possible criminal violations, and the result is that teachers, principals, and other school staff shift responsibility of resolving a difficult situation to the police. Students who are responding to a situation out of fear and trauma are exposed to more adverse events. And our schools need something different. We should end the practice of policing schools and instead invest in resources that help children. There are many recommendations out there, including those from the organization Community in Schools. Schools can invest in developing positive school climates by investing in counselors, social workers, and other community workers who will support children using trauma-informed practices, utilizing restorative justice practices, and implementing PBIS. These professionals would get to know each other, become advocates for them, and support teachers and other school professionals in best practices. I urge you to fund counselors and not cops. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn. And next is Senator Tizzi Lockman. Welcome, Senator Lockman.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you. Welcome.
Great. Thank you so much. I'll try to be brief. As said, my name's Tizzi Lockman, and I'm speaking tonight as a former Red Clay student, a Red Clay mom and community member. And as was mentioned, I'm a legislator in our state senate with the honor and responsibility of representing much of Wilmington, Wilmington area Red Clay footprint. I came tonight to express support for the introduction of a resolution to explore alternatives to SROs as we know them. I think it's really important that this is introduced at this moment of great reckoning for our nation as we consider the human impact of our approach to law enforcement, as well as to reflect on ways that our institutions perpetuate systemic racism. And that includes this tension between discipline and our provision of social, emotional supports for students and educators alike. The conversations that the movement we're experiencing right now is generating are crucial, and they're very difficult. And I'm glad to see that Red Clay will be considering one aspect of this through this resolution, asking the board to reconsider the balance of expenditure on law enforcement officers in our schools versus investing in other types of resources that would be of a preventative and restorative nature. Of course, there's plenty of speakers offering perspectives on this tonight. I just wanted to encourage Red Clay's board to embrace dialogue on this issue and that every board member engage in the opportunity to explore the resolution's proposal deeply and in good faith. And I look forward to listening and participating in that coming dialogue alongside you. So thanks for the time.
Thank you, Senator Lockman. And next, we have Ms. Emily Klein.
Good evening, President Thompson. Thank you. Good evening, President Thompson, Vice President Wilson, board members, and the Red Clay community gathered here today. My name is Emily Klein, and I'm a school psychologist at Skyline Middle School, speaking as an individual. I would like to think that it's impossible for those of us in the business of educating our youth to see the events that have transpired over the last few weeks without reflecting on what we need to change in ourselves, in our educational system, and as a society. We can't be okay with a status quo that continues to marginalize and endanger far too many of our youth and their families. We need to have some very difficult conversations that are long overdue so we can dismantle the systems that oppress and build systems in which we can all thrive. I would like to commend the board for taking this national conversation we're having about the role of law enforcement into consideration as to how it impacts our schools. As educators, we know that school needs to be a safe place in order for our students to focus on learning, and it's a smart idea to periodically reflect on whether our efforts are having the desired effect. As you enter into this discussion, I would like to share with you a resource called "The Framework for Safe and Successful Schools." It's a document that outlines research-supported policy recommendations for LEAs on improving both school safety and access to mental health supports for students. It was developed in collaboration with mental health professional organizations like the National Association of School Psychologists, the American School Counselor Association, and the School Social Work Association of America, as well as the National Association of School Resource Officers and the National Associations for Elementary and Secondary School Principals. This document discusses the importance of physical safety as well as psychological safety. A school that has metal detectors and armed officers in every corridor might be physically safe, but the constant reminder of danger is likely to make it feel less psychologically safe. Vice versa, a school with a supportive school climate in which students feel free to take emotional risks, like asking a question without fear of being perceived as dumb, might be psychologically safe. But if someone doesn't lock the external doors of that building, that school wouldn't be physically safe. Both are important to consider. It's also important to consider the ways in which a history of trauma and the effects of systemic racism may have resulted in unintended effects. This document includes guidance on topics such as discipline policies, school safety drills, and the role of law enforcement and mental health providers in schools. I would like to encourage our board to consider the policy recommendations in that document and utilize data in the science of school safety in this dialogue around how we can make Red Clay schools safe and supportive for all of our students, especially our students of color. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Klein. And next, we have Ms. Monica Beard. Monica Beard is not in the room. Monica Beard is not, did you say, Maria? Yes. Okay, so next, it's Ms. Sarah Fulton. Welcome, Ms. Fulton.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all again. My name is Sarah Fulton, and I am running for school board this year in District B. I hope you all have had the chance to request your absentee ballots. On the subject of SROs, I'll keep my comments relatively short. We've tried a lot tonight already, and there's a lot to go. This issue is not an easy one. There are a lot of logistics to think through, and it's a big change, and that's just the fact of it. We need to make sure that there are ample mental health professionals that are able to step in and take a more proactive role with our students should we go forward with this proposal. But as we've heard tonight, there's overwhelming evidence about the racial disparities that exist when it comes to law enforcement and how punishment in our schools is administered. It's also clear that there's a lot of community support for this proposal coming from stakeholders within both the education system and just in the community. It's important to point out one point, though, that I don't think we've actually heard tonight. In a survey conducted of Delaware SROs, it was found that the majority of SROs who were surveyed admitted to having arrested a student simply to calm them down. How many, you ask? 77%. 77% of Delaware SROs self-reported that they arrested a student simply because they couldn't calm them down or otherwise de-escalate a situation. From what we know about the school-to-prison pipeline, that statistic alone should strike us all as unsettling and something worth reevaluating despite whatever logistical burden. there is surrounding this issue. What's clear is that the community is calling for change and asking for answers. It's the responsibility of every member of this board to listen, to do their homework, to show up to the community meetings, to show up to the community demonstrations, to walk alongside Red Clay families, and to really work together to get through this important discussion. So thank you all for your time. I hope you consider the proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton. And next is Ms. Tracy Murphy. Welcome, Ms. Murphy.
Hi there, everybody. Thank you. Good evening, and especially thanks to the Red Clay Board for your volunteerism and for welcoming community comment. I'm Tracy Murphy. I am a Red Clay parent, a volunteer in Red Clay schools, a Red Clay taxpayer, and a Red Clay voter. I am also a passionate advocate for violence prevention. In the aftermath of highly upsetting school shootings, investments are often made to keep students safe and avert future tragedies. Too often, however, resources are used to implement more stringent security measures in schools, including hiring SROs. And although this focus on physical and visible safety measures is understandable in the wake of a tragedy, it results in approaches to school violence that have not been proven to advance school safety. Moreover, there is evidence that safety measures, such as SROs and metal detectors, create a less welcoming environment for students, particularly students of color. We must do better by students of color and all students, and we must invest in proven, evidence-based solutions that go beyond providing visual representations of safety and instead create a genuinely safer school environment. Such approaches might include peer mediation interventions, teacher training and support, and violence prevention programs like Sandy Hook Promise Programs, which I introduced to Red Clay in 2018 and which is not funded, but instead relies exclusively on the largesse of time-limited volunteers. Where we spend our money is an indicator of our priorities, and we should not be relying on parent volunteers to spearhead violence prevention training. Instead, we should invest in social workers and counselors who can help focus schools on trauma-informed approaches, social emotional learning, and de-escalation strategies. We should prioritize smaller class sizes, which data shows to reduce instances of violence in schools. There are wonderful women and men in SRO roles in Red Clay, and my commentary is not intended to villainize them or anyone. But at this time of national reflection on justice reform, it's time, it's past time, to consider an alternative to SROs as we know them today. I advocate for an investment in prevention and not punishment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. And next is Mr. John Thompson. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Green, my name is John Thompson, and I'm a math teacher at HB DePonte. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. As an aside, I'd like to quickly mention that my mother, the late Ellen Thompson, was once seated where you are as a founding member of the Red Clay Board in 1981, working alongside Dr. Joe Johnson in the first days of Red Clay. I'm proud to work in this district, given that legacy, and having graduated from John Dickinson in 1983. I'm also a retired soldier, having served in the U.S. Army for 20 years. I'm speaking tonight with a concern about removing resource officers from our schools. On a personal level, I take great comfort in their presence at my workplace, and it relieves what a tremendous, relieves what was a tremendous burden on my shoulders, going into a building every day that could potentially be a target for violence, given past events across the country. As a teacher and potentially the last line of defense for my students should the unthinkable happen, my hope is that those that are charged with the responsibility of safety take every reasonable measure in order to ensure our continued protection and well-being. I am the father or stepfather of five Red Clay graduates and two in the Delaware Autism Program, and the presence of officers in their schools has been a great comfort to me. At some time in the last decade, I'm not sure when, I believe this board came to a decision to place officers in our schools and pay for that increase. This decision, I'm certain, was not made lightly, but with great forethought and discussion, and was deliberate. I'm fairly certain that it was made due to a threat, potential or actual, against the safety of our children. What concerns me today is that there's discussion to remove these officers without consideration of that continued threat to their safety. If there's data or information available from state and federal agencies that show that the threat against our schools has been eliminated, then I would support the removal of officers from our schools. But if that threat still exists and the board moves forward to remove these officers despite that continued threat, what I'd like to know is, as a teacher, as a protector, as a father, is what proven methods of deterrence against an armed intruder who means to bring harm to my students is the board considering in lieu of our officers? My hope is that the board takes a great deal of time on this issue and moves very deliberately. As a teacher of sometimes upwards of 35 students in my room, 35 lives, my ultimate responsibility is in their care. Their parents send them to me every day with the implicit understanding that they'll return home safely. My job is to teach eighth-grade math and geometry, but ultimately, that is of little matter if I cannot be assured that they are protected. The Parkland animation video our school staff, our school staff watched last fall in training was, to be blunt, terrifying. I am a 20-year Army veteran with combat experience, and that video terrified me. If you haven't seen it, may I suggest you do. It's on the internet. I pray we do everything possible to make sure this never happens in our schools, and I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And Mr. Barber is not present, so the next, the next up is R.E. Vanilla. Welcome, Mr. Vanilla.
Yes, you got it.
Oh, thank you. Okay, good.
Yeah, no worries. I joined this evening to speak in support of the resolution introduced by Dr. Bohm and Mr. Matthews to terminate the district's contract with Delaware State Police, Wilmington Police and Constables, who provide Red Clay with, quote, "school resource officers," unquote. The term itself is an example of political language that Orwell would call "pure wind." Lest anyone be confused about the people's demands regarding defunding the police and implementing systemic changes so that armed paramilitary of the state are no longer deployed in places they shouldn't be, doing jobs outside the purview of police, this is one of those specific demands. The arguments for continuing this practice are laughable, unquantifiable crime prevention, feel-good stories, the fact that police, if police are needed, the school would in fact call the police, not good enough. Orwell, from the same essay on political language, wrote, "The great enemy of clear language is insincerity. When there is a gap between one's real and one's declared aims, one turns, as were instinctively, to long words and exhausted idioms, like a cuttlefish spurting out ink. To call armed agents of the state 'school resource officers,' it's an insult to our intelligence, and it's a tell. Those cops, they're, they're police. They don't belong in schools. We know what this is. That's why we changed their name. I support this, this, this resolution, and we need to discontinue this relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanilla. And now, Ms. Samantha Grandi. Welcome, Ms. Grandi.
Hello. Can you hear me, everyone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Samantha Grandi, and I've been through the Red Clay School District, and we really do need change. I am Indian, Black, White, and Asian. I have been through this. I'm in support of Grace Ottley. Grace Ottley is smart, educated, driven. She's inspired. She's young. She's, she's young, and she's experienced the things that kids are going through today. Like, she understands what it is like to be a person of color and experience things and bullying. Why are we being bullied? Why are kids being misunderstood? It's because of education. All of this education that we, that we're taking in is, everything is white. Our textbooks are whitewashed, 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 whitewashed. This is why people like me, of color, when we communicate with our classmates who are white, they don't know how to take our experiences, and this could also cause bullying and more violent things happening. This is why we don't need more police. We need to implement things like doing yoga, doing counseling, doing meditation, because when you take a kid that might be going through something at home and the police are getting involved at school, they don't have an outlet to, to talk about these things. We're putting him in detention, and it's useless. They're sitting there, not getting the right tools to cope. Detention, you're just wasting that person's time. You're punishing them for an act but not solving the root of the problem, which manifests in these negative behaviors. When I talk to Grace, she understands my experiences being a person of color. She's easy to talk to. She's always trying to find a solution and to help. She, she works fast, and she's effective. A lot of the people on the board right now are older and Caucasian. You might hear our experiences about being colored, but you don't understand these experiences like Grace would. So she really understands our pain, so she would be a very good person to put on this board. I've, I've learned more about my, about Black history since George Floyd's murder than I have, than I have learned 12 years in being a Red Clay District. You guys can empathize and sympathize with people of color, but you don't understand what we really go through. We really, if you're going to be white on the board, you really have to really educate yourself on what society is going through, and that can't be taught in a textbook, even everyone that's.
Thank you, Ms. Grandi. Thank you very much. And now, the next up is Dustin, Mr. Dustin Thompson, because Mr. Darby is not here. So welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank the sponsors of this legislation. It's definitely beyond the time that we should be having this conversation, so I just want to thank you for the resolution and for their courage to be the ones who started. The racial disparities in the United States are absolutely finally being put out in front of us on so many levels. It's a travesty that so many Black men, women, children have died before we are seemingly willing to start working towards addressing the systemic issues in our society with real policy changes. School resource officers, though, have been a failed experiment in the United States for way too long. Whenever we talk about hardening schools or having cops in schools or putting more guns in schools as if that's going to somehow make things safer, whenever we have these conversations, they almost always end in these measures happening predominantly in BIPOC communities and leading to completely racist policies in reality. There's a lot of people throwing around the idea of being an ally right now to the Black community, but being an ally doesn't mean that you hear the call for change, even have the policies in front of you that are needed to create that change, and then not actually doing anything to support that effort, aside from just giving lip service, which we see on, you know, national and state levels in droves. It's time to be an actual ally, and I'm glad that the district is hearing the reality of what school resource officers have done in our schools, in schools across the nation, and what they haven't done, and they certainly haven't done the knee-jerk reaction of why they were put there to begin with. When cops are hiding in cars, when there's an actual shooting happening, they're not doing the job that we actually started this whole experiment to somehow solve, and it's certainly not what these kids actually need. So this resolution can make sure our priorities in our district, and I'm in Red Clay as well, and I, I want to remain in Red Clay and send my kids, if I'm fortunate enough to have kids, to the Red Clay School District. We need to make sure that we're giving kids actually what they need to be successful and that we're removing a clearly racist system from our society, and I think this resolution can do that. And SROs, there's no reason why they should be the ones in charge of handling mental health crises in schools, or really half of what they do or supposed to be doing in schools. There are professionals that are actually trained to handle these issues that kids are dealing with, and what we need to do is invest in those resources rather than strengthening a system that props up the school-to-prison pipeline.
Mr. Thompson, please bring your comments to a close.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I understand that Mr. Jones is not present, so the next up is Mr. Lyle Dykstra. Welcome, Mr. Dykstra.
They need to accept to unmute.
I think, Mr. Dykstra, you need to unmute. Is that what you said, Tony?
Yes, they need to acknowledge that they would like to be unmuted.
Mr. Dykstra, can you acknowledge that you want to be unmuted, please?
Yes, I do. Okay. Can you hear me now?
We can now.
All right, sorry about that.
Start the clock.
All right. I am, I am Reverend Lyle Dykstra, retired Presbyterian minister. I served a church in the Red Clay District from 1988 to 2002, the Limestone Presbyterian Church. I am here tonight representing the Coalition to Dismantle the New Jim Crow. We are a coalition of churches, synagogues, and mosques, working to dismantle racism and poverty, two very interlocking issues plaguing our American society. Every student in every school needs to feel that he or she is, he or she is respected and loved for the human being he or she is. Forcing a person through any kind of corporal punishment or threat thereof to change his or her behavior has been shown not to be effective. To comment on Mr. Thompson, the teacher whom I heard a few moments ago, the separation between protecting from an active shooter in a school, school building, is very different than trying to control students by a police officer. So I heartily support the resolution that is being proposed. Behavior changes for students when he or she is respected and loved. That student will now develop trust in authorities around him or her. Imagine a mental health professional with training in restorative practices and trauma knowledge relating to students in each of our schools in Red Clay. If the administration of the school is establishing an environment of respect and love for everyone in the school, then this mental health professional with, will thrive and will be a great asset for students. If this professional discovers that a student has a significant issue from their family that is keeping them from functioning well in school, resources can be found. I'm sure there's already a policy on that. My guess is, however, if you had these professionals in schools, that policy would be improved. Someday, a child may come to school and manifest behavior that indicates this student is not able to concentrate today. Imagine if this trusted mental health worker is asked to talk with the student. The student trusting this worker immediately states his or her issue. The mental health worker hears and is able to communicate with the student in a, and in a matter of a few minutes with, in a matter of a few minutes with insightful conversation, the student may be relieved, and the mental health worker is able to send the student back to class to have a good day of learning. Remember, students come to learn even when a day may begin in a difficult way. Red Clay did a great job during the years I served Limestone. All, nearly all of our students were members of the school, students in the school, and you did a great job. I want to call to your attention a written comment from Reverend Dr. Richard Speck, also representing the Coalition to Dismantle the New Jim Crow, which has been sent to all board members.
Reverend Dykstra, you have 18 seconds.
I know, I'm about to finish. So I heartily support putting mental health workers in to replace student, school resource officers. I'm finished with six seconds. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dykstra. And now, we noticed that Ms. Tomasina Jones is present, so Ms. Jones, welcome.
Yes, hello. I am so sorry when I logged in and has me under my maiden name. My sincere apology for that. That was a mix-up on my part. My apologies.
No problem. Welcome.
Thank you. So first, I did want to say that I am grateful that the Red Clay School District is considering this proposal, and my remarks mean no disrespect whatsoever, but I also find the fact that this even has to be proposed is somewhat ridiculous. I am someone who attended the Red Clay School District about 20 years ago. I know that we had mentioned about school shootings and supposedly SROs, police involvement in our school districts are supposed to be helpful in that regard. I literally had my entire high school tenure and even earlier on with the idea of a threat looming of school shootings. I have a four-year-old son who is autistic. I do not want anyone who is armed in any capacity near my child. I do not want anyone who is armed in any capacity near my child for reasons that had already been previously stated. And honestly, this comes down to something very simple. Our youth are indoctrinated into society through school systems. And a lot of arguments I hear as far as children who behave poorly is that they are probably a product of a bad home because that gives society a sense of absolution. School systems are responsible for the children that they care for and how they turn out, especially if the school is in fact the only structure that they have. You are seeing them into adulthood. And obviously, if you're not fit to make decisions that are in regards to children and what is in fact best for them, I'm not sure what anyone would be doing in this profession. Anyone who loves their child, their sibling, their cousin, nephew, grandchild worries about their well-being in this world. I, as a mother of an autistic child, I am terrified on a regular, regular basis at a heightened level. I can only because my child, who is white, is disabled, can even remotely gain insight into what every black child, every minority fears every single day, that any interaction with their, with any sort of authority figure could be their last or could be subject to abuse that the majority doesn't seem to care for. So with so many challenges already facing children, school systems are more than just an indoctrination and some semblance of education, tax dollars-
20 seconds, Ms. Hamilton.
I'm, I'm watching, I promise, are advocating for what our children need. And I have to imagine that there is something, more solutions, like the one that is being proposed that are better than having anybody, police-related, in the school systems to result in traumatizing just by their presence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And Ms. Stevenson is not here. So the next up is Mr. Keith James. Welcome, Mr. James.
Good evening, everybody. Thank the board for giving us the opportunity to have this conversation this evening. You know, before this call, I did have the opportunity to speak with some of the board members. And I thank you all for all that you're doing and continuing this conversation. Again, my name is Keith James. I'm a candidate for state representative in the 10th district and a community activist. And to be honest with you guys, coming into this call, I was 100% not in support of removing SROs. However, based off of the conversation that I'm hearing this evening, I am open to hearing more conversation and dialogue so long as that we're able to take a lot of these concerns that we may have into consideration. However, I am in support of having SROs being required to partake in trauma-informed care and sensitivity trainings before entering the SR, SRO role into our schools. I'm also in support of all schools having mental health professionals on site in every school. My battle with removing SROs from schools has to do with the safety of our children. Violence in our schools have led to children losing their lives in fights here in Delaware. And what we've seen on a national level is even school shootings. Some of the things that I hear this evening about systemic racism, I, I want you guys to know that it is very much so real. I have been on the front lines of the protests and the policy changes even before George Floyd. And I see there's a couple of people on here as well who have been in that fight. But, so you know, systemic racism is real, not only with our police departments. It also exists within our education system. Teachers who choose to call the school, school resource officer instead of reaching out to a proper chain of command or utilizing all their resources within the school, with their admin, with their counselors, with other teachers who may be able to communicate with students, haven't always been tapped into before they call the school resource officer. So those are some of the things that I think we need to honestly look at. I know that school shootings sadly have been talked about on this call, but I'm not sure that it was really taken, taken very seriously. And I know that we have data that shows that African-Americans, black and brown students are disproportionately suspended, are disproportionately arrested. And, and we want to make sure that we address that. But Red Clay, right now, we're in a position to where those funds, I don't think it should be an if or, you know, we should be able to fund our mental health professional-
30-second warning.
Thank you. We should be able to fund our mental health professionals in our schools while also utilizing the, the platform that you have to help with community policing, to help change the stigma that results in, you know, the way police officers see your students and the way that students see your police officers. This is a time for us to bring people together. And I understand some of the concerns I'm hearing this evening, but I think we should take more things into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. James. And next up is Ms. Cheris Lockett. Welcome, Ms. Lockett.
Thank you. I just want to state that I am in full support of removing SROs from the schools, like many have stated who have spoke already. I am in agreement with replacing the SROs with qualified professionals who can target the rooted issues that some of these students are dealing with before they even come in contact with the SRO, such as psychological problems, physical issues, social, emotional issues, which basically are the root of behavioral problems. Police officers, SROs are not trained to deal with these type of issues. And I'm also in agreement with having SROs trained, have cultural sensitivity training. And so they're qualified to, you know, deal with these issues. And that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lockett. Next up is Ms. Chandra Pitts. Welcome, Ms. Pitt.
Thank you. Good evening to our superintendent, Mr. Green, and the entire board and everyone that's on the call. I greatly appreciate everyone's comments who's shared. On May 25th, a teenage girl courageously held a camera and watched in horror with her two younger siblings as these children witnessed the horrifying torture and brutal murder of George Floyd. I recently watched in pain as their mother sobbed uncontrollably, uncontrollably. 24 days after this experience that her children had, these children are still physically, mentally, psychologically shaken in fear and trauma. They are damaged for life. I want to remind you all that every single Red Clay student and parent shared the same exact traumatic experience and countless others that have followed from the same exact vantage point as these children. This is not something that happened worlds away and across the country. It's happened right here in every single Red Clay home in Wilmington, Delaware. We have all been traumatized for life by what we've seen at the hands of police. I want you to imagine not what happened on May 25th, but on August 24th, or some date in the near future when Red Clay schools open back up, the trauma that will be relived when those schools enter the doors, excited about school, and the trauma that will be reignited by seeing an armed police officer with a gun facing them as they walk into schools in August. I want you to imagine what it would look like to have teachers and who are well-supported and have somebody to call on for, you know, support as we work on prevention, intervention, different practices like social justice. So imagine teachers not just having a school resource officer armed with a gun, but school resource partners that they don't call just when a fight breaks out, but that creates and builds a school culture well in advance. Someone that students could have a trusted adult to go to. If we thought about the qualifications, we've all applied for that job, whether it was our first job at McDonald's or the superintendent of a school district like Red Clay, there were qualifications, there was a job posting. What would the best qualified candidate look like? What would the masterful professionals, what tools would they have?
30-second warning.
Would they have trauma-informed practices, restorative justice, de-escalation, mental health counseling, crisis mediation, PBIS intervention, prevention, holistic wellness? Or in what world would that physician description look like? Armed police officers with military training that are qualified to make police stops on the end of the road? I would like to suggest not only that we reallocate these funds for qualified, uniquely qualified, highly qualified-
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. Next, we have Kaia Tanya John. Welcome, Ms. John.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about this subject matter. As a Red Clay parent, three children, myself, I was raised in Red Clay. I was part of busing. I was part of the creation of Red Clay. I've been through every gamut of schooling, from honors to special needs. I have a son that has autism. Now, with the climate of the world today, uncertainty is what's dwelling in my home right now. Uncertainty as to what their school will look like when they return to school. Will they be safe? The biggest thing that my children are asking me is not whether or not they'll be protected from the SRO. They want to know if they're going to be protected from other students. Uh, my schools are, my kids are in schools that are multicultural. This is an election year. The leader of this country currently is very divisive. So do we need SROs right now? I'm torn. I'm torn because I don't know what safety measures will be in place for my children when they come back to school. I don't even know if the SRO is the appropriate safety measure to seek. But I do know that mental health training, mental health needs are going to be at an all-time high when these children walk those school doors. This country is traumatized. And it does not look like the things that are going on right now in this world, it doesn't look like this is going to end anytime soon. So my concentration is not necessarily with the SRO, whether or not we need them. My concentration is how do we heal these children? How do we heal the teachers that need to teach the children? Because they too have been traumatized. That's all I have to say in a matter of good luck with everything. And I'm praying for everyone. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. John. Mr. Leon is not present. So the next up is Ms. Evelina Aguilar. Welcome, Ms. Aguilar.
They need to acknowledge that they want to be unmuted.
Ms. Aguilar, please acknowledge you want to be unmuted. Ms. Aguilar, please acknowledge that you want to be unmuted so that you can participate.
He's unmuted now.
Okay. Hello. Welcome. Ms. Evelina Aguilar?
Yes.
Welcome. We, we, hold on one second, Tony. You may want to restart the clock. Want to make sure you get your three minutes. Welcome, Ms. Aguilar. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, do you hear me now?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. For me, as a mother of four child, childs, eh, the four childs attend to Red Clay, as a mom, I concern that the removal of the police from school, it's put on the table. Until now, their presence has very important because a concealer could not separate a fight, for example. We don't really hear about the fact that many police are good and have great relationship with the students, even with the teachers. More concealers are definitely needed in a school, starting with the elementary schools where there are more than 400 students and sometimes it's just a single concealer. We also need extensive training for police officers when it comes to dealing with children with disabilities. For example, my two children's. And it's difficult to make a decision about this. And in my opinion, both are important at the school. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Ms. Aguilar. We appreciate it. Next is Mr. Willie Scott. Welcome, Mr. Scott.
Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Willie Scott. I'm a Wilmington resident as well as a Red Clay resident. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Mo Kennedy, who's the executive director of the National Association of School Resource Officers, recently made a comment, and I'll quote his comment. He said, "We hope, however, that rather than eliminating SRO programs, communities will consider transforming them as needed with best practices. This can help prevent the loss of many benefits well-administered SRO programs can provide," end quote. And I think that transformation is what's being proposed, a move away from policing schools to providing the support systems necessary to address root causes and focusing on preventive rather than reactive measures. While the safety and security of schools continue to be important, we have to learn and adjust based on our experiences with the current approach and eliminate the negative consequences and racial inequities. What we have learned since Columbine is that those who commit self-trocity have a fairly consistent profile. It would be much more beneficial to devote resources such as counselors and psychologists to proactively engage students that fit the profile rather than relying on an SRO to engage a troubled student ready to kill. So while there is still a need for safety, training, the application of best safety practices, and an incident response system, there's little value in having police as a routine fixture in the place of learning and development for young people. I support the proposed transformation towards a more effective and less biased approach that spends more on addressing the root causes of gruesome school attacks as well as ordinary behavioral issues. And as the data indicate, eliminates a well-documented inherent racial bias that lead to so many black students being arrested unnecessarily and classified as criminals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Ms. Scarborough is not here. So the next up is Ms. Alma Scott. Welcome, Ms. Scott.
Hi, thank you. I too live in Wilmington, and it would be in the Red Clay School, School District. When a serious offense occurs on school grounds, I expect the police to be called. Typical juvenile arrests on school property involve bad behavior, not criminal activity. Students are routinely arrested on disorderly conduct charges for talking back to teachers, skipping class, or bullying. These behaviors are normal and should not be criminalized and outsourced to the police. A University of Tennessee sociologist found that students in schools with SROs were nearly five times more likely to be arrested for disorderly conduct, which can encompass a wide range of non-criminal behavior, such as speaking up when an SRO commits violence against a classmate. The ACOU reports that students of color, students with disabilities, and students of color with disabilities are more likely to be funneled into the criminal justice system for behavior that may warrant supportive interventions or trip to the principal's office, not a criminal record. All of this feeds into the school-to-prison pipeline for black and brown children. Living through such experiences are traumatic and often inhumane. I suggest putting humanity back into education by redirecting much-needed funds towards hiring psychologists, social workers, counselors, school nurses, and more teachers of color. And I'm going to quote from Dr. Love's book where she says, "We who are dark want to matter and live, not just survive, but to thrive." I'm going to repeat this one more time. "We who are dark want to matter and live, not just survive, but to thrive. We want our children to be educated, not incarcerated. I vote for the removal of SROs from schools." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. And next up is Ms. Tori Ann Parker. Welcome, Ms. Parker.
Hi. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I think it's really fantastic that so many of us are willing to stand up for what we believe is right for our children. And I encourage everyone to remain engaged with our education system. My name is Tori Ann Parker. And as a member of your district, I implore you to please reconsider the removal of resource officers from our schools. I believe that resource officers can actually play a very important role in fostering a better relationship between the police and our next generation. I am a firm supporter of the Black Lives Matter movement, and I urge you to use your elected positions to encourage the adoption of policies that help end systemic racism, not only with police reform, which I believe is long overdue and necessary, but adopting policies that address inequality in our public school system. However, the decision to remove officers from our schools would add bricks to the wall of distrust between our youth and the police that are supposed to be present to protect them. Many callers tonight have raised really important points regarding the need to expand the amount of counselors and mental health professionals that are in our schools. and I couldn't agree more. Many tonight have touched on the fact that police officers are not properly trained or equipped with the tools needed to address student issues. Again, I agree. But I'm very curious as to why we have tied these two issues together as an either or scenario. I'd like to bring attention to the fact that we as a community had the opposite reaction this time last year when there were unfortunate and tragic string of school shootings. Many throughout the community rightfully called for at least one resource officer on campus for the protection of children and teachers during emergency situations. In closing, I respectfully ask for you to pause and reconsider the ramifications of this decision. I ask you to take a closer look at how we can provide our schools with additional social workers and counselors, but not necessarily at the cost or the safety of students and teachers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Ms. Steen is not here, so the next person to speak is Megan Bell. Welcome, Ms. Bell.
Sorry, Kathy, she's not in here either.
Oh, she's not here either. Okay, so the next person to speak is Ms. Kristen Bricker. Welcome, Ms. Bricker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank, good evening. My name is Kristen Bricker. I am a Red Clay voter and also secretary of the Progressive Democrats for Delaware. Thank you for the opportunity to express my support for the resolution to remove school resource officers from Red Clay schools. I attended Red Clay schools from kindergarten to high school and I graduated from AI High in 2000. That's long enough to remember, long ago enough that I remember when schools, what they were like before our, our SROs. AI's first armed SRO arrived when I was about halfway through high school. And like a lot of kids, I had a little, I had it a little rough at home and school was the only place that I had interaction with adults who had the ability to do something concrete for me at times when I needed more support than I was getting at home. And I wish Red Clay had more mental health specialists and basic health services when I was a student. And then maybe a teacher or a school nurse could have flagged me for special services a lot earlier than they did. AI High's nurse sergeant did flag me for sessions with the one therapist the entire district shared at the time. And I think that that and after school clubs and sports and a very few, a few very inspiring teachers were really what made me a decent person. We now know that kids with adverse childhood experiences have an increased risk of becoming adults who suffer from chronic disease, mental illness, suicide, being violent, or being the victim of violence. That was my experience and in high school, I was actually the victim of two violent crimes. In both cases, my interaction with police was very traumatic. And honestly, that's the experience of a lot of crime victims I know, particularly women. In neither case did the police help me. They only hurt me. In the second case, when I was 17 and a senior at AI, I was actually beaten up and suffocated by US Marshals while I was shackled in a Washington DC parking garage. When I needed help, the last person I wanted to see was an armed uniformed police officer in the hallways of school, the place where I tended to experience the least violence growing up. I know that some parents and school staff might believe that SROs build good relationships with students and I'm sure that that's true. But I'll say that even though our SRO never hurt me, he also never helped me. The only time I ever saw him do anything were the couple of times he put my classmates into squad cars for offenses that previously would have been handled in-house by the school. I know from my personal experience as a high school student in handcuffs that police in jails are not what lead kids away from violence. Honestly, getting my butt whipped by a-
Thirty second warning.
Probably encouraged me to do some violence. It pains me to see that over the past 20 years, the presence of armed police officers in schools has only increased and this is at the expense of salaried mental health and teaching positions who are the school staff that are probably the main reason I didn't do that much crime with young adults. So I encourage you to please vote yes on the resolution to remove SROs from schools so that we can reduce class sizes and increase health services in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bricker. Ms. Clark is not here, so the next person is Mr. Kobe Owens. Welcome.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kobe Owens. I am an activist and a local organizer. And I just, you know, wanted to speak out today about this resolution. Today, I would like to share my support and solidarity with the members of the school board who were brave enough to pit for such a monumental resolution. Dr. Boom, Bone, and Jose Matthews. I share the same concerns as many black people across the nation and right here in Delaware. We are tired. By that, I mean, we have met our profound level of emotional, mental, and physical exhaustion from the burdens of a system that has failed our community. We are tired of the grieving, we're tired of grieving for lives that are meant to be lived across this nation. We are tired of aimless administrative meetings. We are tired of silence on all individual and institutional levels right here in Delaware. Today, I speak to encourage the board and the school district to take and engage your students and teachers in a conversation about what schooling would look like without policing. Safety does not exist when black and brown students are forced to interact with a system of policing that is, that views them as a threat and not as students. For many black and brown youth, the presence of police in their school disrupts their learning environment. There is a culture clash there. And it exists between law enforcement and the learning environment. Police enforcement, police enforce criminal laws while schools are supposed to nurture students. We know that the mere presence of police in schools is a pressing and alarming issue and also serves as a reinforcement and acceleration the school to prison pipeline. And it's borne out by the data. According to the most recent data released by the US Department of Education's Civil Rights Data Collection, black students represent 15% of enrollment in public schools across the country, yet they account for 31% of students who are referred to law enforcement or arrested. Research also shows that higher discipline rates for students of color are not due to higher rates of misbehavior, but instead due to a systematic racism within our school system. So I say this, and I keep in mind comments short, I say this to the entire board. I hope that you take a look at this resolution and over the next month, you review what is right for not only the students, but especially the students who are black and brown who go to school every day out of fear. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Owens. Next up is Mr. Martin Wilson. What, hi, Martin.
Good evening. I thank each and everyone that have spoke so far this evening. Great community input. But right now, I want to turn the subject a little bit about my trying to create a link on the Red Clay School Board, District B. I grew up right here in the city of Wilmington. I love this city and care about all children here. My children receive their education in the Red Clay School District. So you know it's dear and dear to my heart. I feel like these are my kids. Their success is my success. I'm extremely proud of how we handle this unprecedented turn of events. The relationships I've grown during my tenure was a true asset and the professionalism of our teachers and staff and the swift back office decisions. Everything ran like a well-oiled machine. We learned so much through homeschool. Had a lot of parents talk about what went on in their homes saying, "God bless the children. God bless the teachers. We love what Mr. Green is doing over there. We love the board." You know, so many kudos. I realize we could use some of those tools to enhance the whole system. This has been a learning point for everyone. These and many more ideas I have, I will be pursuing to elevate us to new levels while including everyone. Remember me for Red Clay District B election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Next up is Mr. Stephen Fackenthal. Welcome, Mr. Fackenthal.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, and good evening, board. My name is Stephen Fackenthal, teacher at Red, teacher in Red Clay at Ritchie Elementary, political action chair and vice president-elect for the Red Clay Education Association. On behalf of our educators, I wanted to speak regarding the reopening of our schools for the fall and the committees that will drive that conversation. RCA looks for an open and transparent process that involves all stakeholders. We are very receptive to the fact that Superintendent Green, the district office, has ensured RCA representation on each of the five reopening work groups. And we look forward to soliciting feedback from our members to contribute to those conversations. As these conversations unfold, we are hopeful the following will be looked at extremely carefully. Attention to physical dimensions of our classrooms, age of our buildings, as to project how many students and adults can safely be in place. What precautions will be put in place to keep our students and educators safe, especially our most senior educators? And what protocols will be in place in case it is known a student or staff member has contracted the virus? We certainly recognize that there are many moving parts that affect these decisions and we look forward to an open dialogue and opportunities to give feedback along the way. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fackenthal. Next up is Mr. David Hallberg. Welcome, Mr. Hallberg.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for listening to me and thanks, everybody on this call for teaching me so much tonight. I don't have any statistics or solutions. I don't have any anecdotes or anything like that. I just have a pretty simple question. It's not really a question. It's more amusing, like if I wanted to normalize and reinforce the school to prison pipeline, the exact way I do it is by using our money to put armed guards in our schools, you know, starting in like third grade. My daughter is a Red Clay student. She's a rising first grader. She has two more years before she joins the illustrious halls of Warner, including a policeman with a gun. And I hope that everybody on the board considers how you're going to explain to my daughter how she has to overcome her fear of getting shot to death by a policeman in order to go to school. I'm a white passing person of color and that kind of brings its own little fun things with it and my daughter is too, but we shouldn't have to lean on that just to feel safe in a public place. And I'm sure that resonates with some people on the call. That's it. That's my whole conclusion. One minute and 23 second warning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hallberg. And next up is Ms. Chalie Direxky. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm a 17-year-old student at Mount Pleasant High School. I previously attended a private school where we had no SROs. At this private school, students who broke the rules were able to just speak to a counselor and get the help they need. But the absence of SROs should not be a privilege for only predominantly white and wealthy schools. Having armed officers at school, at the very least, may ignite trauma and send a message to students that need to be watched. At the most, it leads to many students' first arrest. As a white person, I have never personally felt threatened by the presence of SROs in my school, but it is a privilege to be able to say that. It is a privilege to say that SROs make you feel safer when they have always targeted black, brown, and disabled students. Teenagers and children should be allowed to learn and grow without their normal behavior being criminalized. As a student, I encourage you all to be on the right side of history and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Exke, Mr. Exke. Next is Mr. James Campbell. Welcome, Mr. Campbell.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak and thank everyone, thanks everyone for their comments. Clearly, this is something that people care, care very deeply about and they should. I've been a teacher in the district for over 20 years now and have been in schools where there were SROs and there weren't SROs. And just having had that personal experience, I would caution the board against hastily removing a resource that has, that I've seen actually help many people over the years, regardless of color or regardless of socioeconomic background. These folks are good people, by and large, just like I believe most people are good people. But these, the SROs that I've come in contact with aren't there to arrest people. That's not their goal. They're trying to establish relationships and promote more understanding and try to show students who may view them as a threat that they're really not a threat. They can be there to help. So rather than remove the SRO from the situation, I would suggest keep them around. Include them in this healing process. Yes, bring in more resources that everyone has, has talked about this evening, but also keep the SRO there and let them be part of the solution. I mean, it takes a village and we've heard that a lot and police are part of that village and let's keep them involved in, in the process. You know, as I've said over the years, there have been instances where SROs have been able to stop things from happening because they had those relationships built with the students and they were able to de-escalate. So rather than, and, and again, I appreciate everyone's comments and I'm glad that you have the opportunity to share them. But rather than just say it's all the, let's get the SROs out of there. Having been on the, having seen the benefit that these SROs can provide and, and the relationships that they've built, I would caution just getting rid of them. Let's keep them around and make them, help them, give them the opportunity to be part of the solution. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. And next we have Ms. Sarah Green. Welcome, Ms. Green.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for having me. My name is Sarah Green and I'm a Red Clay parent. I am going to read a letter of support on the resolution to end the relationship with SROs from the Building People Power Education Issue Campaign. But first, before I list all the statistics about how youth of color are disproportionately represented in the prison, school to prison pipeline, I just would like to point out that my daughter goes to a school that is over 95% students of color. The next school that she will go to is over 95% students of color. And I don't understand how a district can say the only elementary school that they have a police officer in is one that has almost entirely students of color. So this is the letter. "As Americans, we are collectively reconsidering the role of our police, of police in our communities, most importantly in regards to its horrifying impact on people of color. Across the country, we have seen school districts leading the way to more equitable education systems by ending their contracts with police. The Minneapolis Board of Education voted unanimously to terminate its contract with the police department, citing racial equity as the motivation. Kim Ellison, Chair of the Minneapolis Board of Education, says, "I want the students and parents to know that we are listening to them and that it's an issue of equity for us and our students of color are treated differently in our schools and that's no longer acceptable to us." According to an extensive study by University of Florida School of Law, "A police officer's regular presence at a school is predictive of greater odds that school officials refer students to law enforcement for various offenses, including seemingly minor offenses." Furthermore, abundant empirical evidence demonstrates that students of color are disproportionately represented throughout every stage of the school to prison pipeline. For example, school administrators and teachers discipline minority students more often and more severely than white students for committing similar offenses. And children of color have higher arrests and conviction rates when they become involved with law enforcement and the justice system. In Superintendent Green's June 2nd message to Red Clay families, he stated that Red Clay schools are dedicated to eradicating historical disparities, addressing institutional barriers, and seeking proactive-
Thirty second warning.
-change to end racism and injustice. "One of the biggest institutional barriers for students of color is the disproportionate rate of involvement in the juvenile justice system. In order to eradicate historical disparities, let's take the chance to really understand the impact of policing our schools and starting children off on a path to incarceration. Thank you for taking the time to consider this proactive decision. Our children do not belong in jail. Let's make our choices in our district that turn that belief into-
Thank you, Ms. Green. And next up is Neha Das. Welcome, please.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Neha Das. I'm 17 years old and I'm a current student at the Charter School of Wilmington. And I'm here to provide a student perspective that you might not have already heard of. Now, the fact is, is that police presence in schools is a tactic of intimidation and takes away from a safe learning environment. Now, as a student, the numbers shocked me. A report from the Governmental Accountability Office found that black students are 23.2% overrepresented in the children referred to law enforcement in schools. And the Civil Rights Data Collection finds that black students are three times more likely to attend a school with more security staff like police than mental health personnel like guidance counselors. Now, I found how Delaware and specifically Red Clay is- is complicit in this shocking statistic. The racial makeup of public schools in Red Clay compared to their nearby private school counterparts is astounding. And I've had plenty of white suburban families come up to me and say things like, "Public schools in Red Clay are, quote, 'going downhill.'" This, in my view, is a claim based in racism because they think that somehow public schools with a lot of students of color are somehow more dangerous and need more policing and control. Black students are far more likely to attend overpoliced public schools in Red Clay, and you, as the board, are complicit in this. Break this perception and create a public schooling environment that is nurturing. For example, private schools with 95% white populations have 10 to 20 guidance counselors to help them with college admissions and public health. We need that. Every day, I walk into a school with a man holding a gun outside the front door. There are barely any windows and no mental health support groups. It feels honestly like a prison. Many students of color I know are suffering with mental health problems and can benefit from school psychologists. Instead of one psychologist per 1,000 students, we need to increase that number and allocate our money in a responsible way. I think we can learn from other states, and I think we need to abolish SRO officers in schools. Now, I know what you're all thinking. What about school shooters and threats to our students? In four high-profile school shootings, like Kentucky Marshall, Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and Maryland Great Mills High, SRO officers failed. You need school psychologists to detect early warning signs. That's the best way. I'm urging you to remember me, and please use your resources to employ more mental health personnel in schools.
Thirty-second warning.
I'm aware, to stop school shooters, but also improve the environment of black kids in schools who have been historically oppressed by the education system and who have been denied access to mental health resources. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Das. Next is Ms. Lee Freerich. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello, welcome. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Leah Ferrex. I've been a part of the Red Clay School District since I moved to this area in 2005. I've attended North Star Elementary School, H.B. Dupont Middle School, and Cab Calloway School of the Arts. I personally have seen the effects that SROs have had on students throughout my time in the Red Clay School District. And although they are friendly faces to me, I fear that to others, they may be much more than a face. I can't imagine going to school to fear for my safety and well-being. I hope to bring about change by supporting Grace Ottley in her candidacy for encouraging more diversity in our schools and discouraging any discriminatory practices. I believe that she will bring in a new perspective to the board and encourage the students' voices to be heard, just like mine. Thank you for your time and for listening to my thoughts and concerns on this issue.
Thank you. And next is Mr.
Kathy, Joe is not here. Mr. Joe Schluck.
Okay, then I guess I'm the last one. Good evening. My name is Kathy Thompson, and I'm running for reelection to the Red Clay School Board. Since this has been a long election cycle, this is my third public session addressing you. In April, I spoke about my very long-term dedicated commitment to Red Clay and my unparalleled experience working on behalf of Red Clay. Last month, I highlighted our major accomplishments over the past 10 years I've been on the board, as well as my focus should I be reelected. I love Red Clay. I absolutely love Red Clay. Education is the lifeblood of our society and the cornerstone of our democracy. I so appreciate everyone coming out and speaking in public session tonight because it really helps us to do our job. We will talk later about the motion, but it's been phenomenal to hear so much public opinion. And I know that there is a variety of opinions all over the map on this issue, and it's great that you're expressing it. So thank you very much. I've been involved, deeply involved in Red Clay for over 25 years, since my kids were in school. I've participated in Red Clay in many different roles, as parent, mother, PTA worker, PTA member, PTA president, fundraising chair, concession worker, band chaperone, school chaperone, homeowner, taxpayer, referendum supporter, voter, committee member, and board member. I've participated in hundreds and hundreds of meetings for Red Clay in these roles and worked for Red Clay on a broad swath of issues, such as financial, handling our over three-quarter of a billion-dollar yearly budget, strategic plan, setting the direction and focus of our district, the board policy, setting the policy governing our district, inclusion, ensuring that all our students could attend neighborhood schools if they wanted to, attendance zones, referendums, and the list goes on. My experience with and commitment to Red Clay is broad, wide, and deep. It's unparalleled in this election. I know many of you have been in these meetings with me. I hope you have seen and know that I listen, question, analyze, respond, absolutely seek out community input, and am informed and dig into problems to ensure I understand them before making a decision in the best interest of all students in Red Clay, as well as the entire Red Clay community. I'm fiscally responsible, having served on the Community Financial Review Committee for many years, digging into our over $300 million yearly budget to understand, provide transparency, robustness.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, Maria, and spending, as that's critical to the strength of our district. Thank you again for coming out tonight. I really hope that you will support me with my proven commitment to Red Clay and unparalleled, broad, deep, and experience working with Red Clay. Thank you very much. Okay, now we move on to the agenda. So the first item of business is approving the minutes of the executive session from May 13, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
That was Dr. Bohm moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, seconds. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote to approve the minutes. Maria, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper? Mr. Casper, you there?
I think he's muted.
Okay, I'm trying to find him.
He's muted.
I unmuted him. He just needs to acknowledge.
Jason, you need to acknowledge unmuting.
I just did. I don't know why I was muted, because I didn't mute myself, but yes.
Yes. Mr. Matthews?
I noticed that he was muted as well earlier, Maria and Tony.
Yes.
He's unmuted.
Perfect, okay.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the May 13, 2020, regular session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Bohm moved. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Ms. Sabo, second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing nothing. Maria will take a roll call vote to approve the minutes, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to the action items. The first is the School Board calendar and meeting locations for 2020, 2021.
And so, Madam President, I just want to clarify and let the public know, while it is a recommendation that the Red Clay School Board of Education approve the School Board meeting's calendar and locations for 2020, 2021 school year submitted, the July 8th, which is a short turnaround for that meeting, will be held virtually as well. So just that everyone is clear about the July meeting being a virtual meeting.
Thank you. So with that, we know it'll be a July meeting. Okay, it's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the School Board meeting calendar and locations for the 2020, 2021 school year, as submitted, recognizing that the July meeting will be virtual. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wilson moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Newton seconded. Any discussion?
So if we are going back to in-person in August, is that what you're saying? Mr. Green?
We are proposing that unless something were to change. Obviously, we're taking the recommendations in terms of gatherings. By that time, we are anticipating being in Phase 3 of the reopening. So we are anticipating having in-person meetings in August, starting in August.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Maria?
Okay, Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we move on to the administrative appointment, and I think Mr. Green is going to handle this.
Yes, it is a recommendation that the Board of Education approve the following administrative appointment: Dr. Corey Heacock as Acting Principal at Stanton Middle School, effective July 1, 2020.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Who, was that, was that Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sabo moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Newton seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing nothing, I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Maria, please.
Okay. Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Heacock, if you're on.
Dr. Heacock, congratulations. We're excited about your leadership. It is the recommendation that the Board of Education approve the following administrative appointment: Ms. Deb Ashton, Acting Principal at Shortledge Academy, effective July 1, 2020.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabo, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I believe we're ready for a roll call vote. Maria, please.
Okay. Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. Ashton.
And so, as a result of internal moves and retirement, and Ms. Ashton being the former Assistant Principal at Shortledge Academy, now becoming the Acting Principal, left the vacancy. So it is a recommendation that the Board of Education approve the following administrative appointment: Ms. Diane Mahatir as Elementary Assistant Principal at Shortledge Academy, effective July 1, 2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Maria, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. Mahatir. Welcome. Yep.
And as a result of a vacancy for the Meadowwood Program, we had an Assistant Principal vacancy. So it is a recommendation that the Board of Education approve the following administrative appointment: Ms. Megan O'Donnell as Assistant Principal for the Meadowwood Program, effective July 1, 2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Sabo moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Casper, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I believe we're ready for a roll call vote, please, Maria.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. O'Donnell.
And so, again, as a result of retirements, internal moves that left us with a vacancy, it is the recommendation that the Board of Education approve the following administrative appointment: Ms. Anne Marie Swift, Elementary Assistant Principal, effective July 1, 2020, at Lewis Elementary School.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wilson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabo, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I believe we're ready for a roll call vote, please, Maria.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. Swift. Okay, now we move on to the consent agenda. And it's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the consent items A and B as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Casper moves. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was Dr. Newton. Okay, we're ready for a roll call vote. Maria, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent report. The floor is yours, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, members of the community. Just first want to take this time to say thank you to the 60-plus members of our community that have come out to share, express, and voice their concerns relative to the time that we find ourselves in. As the leader, Superintendent of Red Clay School District, I do want to acknowledge that the hard work, determination, and effort of every member is valued within our school community. And that is with the understanding that we do have much work ahead of us. So before I get into and actually share a little bit more about what we plan to do to help our community heal and support one another, I do want to acknowledge the great work that went into last week's virtual graduations. Obviously, no one, I definitely didn't anticipate a pandemic to strike us during my first year of superintendency, but I think the collective will of our community showed through in terms of really trying to dignify and honor our class of 2020 virtually while maintaining the health, safety, and welfare of our community. So we were able to celebrate over 800-plus students as a part of Red Clay Graduation Week. And again, there were seven unforgettable commencement ceremonies that were online. So thank you to our visual department, our communications department, each of our schools respectively, for their diligence, hard work, not only with virtual ceremonies, but catering to and making our graduates feel as special as they could from yard signs. Each graduate in partnership with local small businesses, we're able to deliver personalized graduation cakes to our graduates through donations, to many donors throughout our community. So that was just a fitting opportunity, again, during a crisis and during a pandemic, to recognize, again, our seniors as best we could during these uncertain and unfortunate situations and times. Our last ceremony, which will be the eighth for Red Clay, is on June 23 at 7:00 PM, where we honor the graduates and completed from the James H. Groves Adult Education Program. And so we are excited to recognize and celebrate them as well, and thank you to our many partners who will help our Groves graduates go on to continue their education by providing opportunities through Wilmington University, Delaware State University, and the year up program, as they continue to go on to either college and or the workforce. For Red Clay, again, not only were we honoring graduates, but we know that they're all important transition years, especially for our fifth graders who are going on to middle school, sixth grade, and our eighth graders who are going on to high school, and then just overall during this time, really maintaining that level of connectedness as best we could. We saw, again, beyond the Zooms, but a lot of move-up ceremonies, yard sign delivery to mark transitions from elementary, but also the many drive-by celebrations and minimal activities that our staff members, school leaders, and families were able to engage in. And so we do long for the day to be able to reopen our school doors, because I personally feel that, you know, virtual learning, although we've learned a lot, and we've been able to accelerate and find some new methods of connecting with learners. Schools are about relationships, right? It's the equation between the teacher and the student, and those who support that learning process in each of our schools. So, you know, again, thank you to all of our schools for all their effort to make the closeout of this school year a memorable and under the circumstances. That being said, our custodial crew, school nutrition, transportation department, were on the front lines from day one. They never stopped working, although our buildings were closed. Through our meal distribution program at sites, where over 250,000 meals were served in Red Clay, our business office dealing with leaves, the uncertainty around leaves, the COVID crisis struck. You know, there were a lot of uncertainties in terms of, you know, folks' pay and benefits, and the men and women, you know, behind the scenes that keep school operations functioning did a yeoman's job of not only working remotely, but taking the time to come in through measuring with social distancing and such to keep the daily operation and the business functions of the district running as smooth as possible. So I do want to acknowledge the dedicated members through all of those school operation department for all their hard work. Ms. Jill Floria, CFO, Dr. Ted Ammon, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Brumall, all of my cabinet members, you know, thank you for all your efforts to get our schools through the finish line, but more importantly, spending the endless number of hours per day, as I shared with our cabinet yesterday. Since the closing of March 13, I may not have had a sound night's sleep, but the few hours that I do capture each night because of the dedicated educators, teachers, principals, leaders, school custodial staff, transportation, child nutrition, business office staff that we have in Red Clay. And again, as we're talking about moving forward, we also need to take the time to celebrate the dedicated men and women that we have throughout our district who do what they do on behalf of children and families in Red Clay. So thank you for all that you've been able to do to help us manage through this COVID-19 crisis. And with that being said, paying particular attention to where we find ourselves with the social injustices and things that are taking place across our nation, but are also right here in our own front yards, backyards, however you choose to determine, through our Office of Equity and Strategic Partnerships, and I will duly note that I can't point to another district that has that resource, has the capacity to focus our efforts on our work. As our first public mentor alluded to, we have partnered with many of our community-based agencies to address social inequity, racism, and things that impact our communities. With that being said, our Office of Equity and Strategic Partnerships has some information that will go out to our communities that's actually available to help us focus on our shared humanity, prioritize learning, and have these tough conversations. As, you know, we pay attention to, excuse me, news outlets, Facebook, and get things, our children have questions. I know it's resonating in my own household, and oftentimes, as parents, we find it difficult to try to share the grief that our communities are experiencing. So we are releasing, obviously, some resources and activities and things that our families can have to have a more just, equitable, and racially conscious world. So thank you to Dr. Bond and the work that she's doing in leading our Office of Equity and Strategic Partnerships and creating brave space for courageous conversations. And again, it's a toolkit to help foster productive conversations about race and civil disobedience. It couldn't be more fitting, and again, a testament to who we are as Red Clay, the two of our own. Red Clay student filmmakers, Kylie Loeng and Shereen Quasi, Calhoun School of the Arts students have been named for the Smithsonian's documentary showcase, their film, The Actress Who Died a Thousand Deaths. Anne Mae Wong and Racism in Hollywood was one of 35 in the nation to be selected by the National Museum of African-American History and Culture to be showcased by the Smithsonian Learning Lab. So thank you to those students, and again, while we do have our obstacles and roads ahead of us, we do have students who are active and who are activists and who are passionate about this. And as a part of what we've been doing and I'm going to continue to do throughout our district is elevating student voice. So congratulations to these two students for being selected for such a prestigious honor and also having such a fitting topic, based on the times that we're currently living, when the National Museum of African-American History and Culture has selected them to be 35 across the nation. And so we're proud of them, and that will be, and there's a link here, be shown through June 24. So congratulations to our Calhoun Student of the Arts. We also want to recognize and congratulate Ms. Kim Stock, who was Red Clay's 2020-21 Teacher of the Year. With her 13 years of experience in education, Ms. Stock teaches English Language Arts class at Thomas McCain High School, where she works closely with our students, who are English learners. And a quote from her is, "The most important job I have as a teacher," according to Ms. Stock, "is to teach my students who they are and not who someone else thinks they are or thinks they should be." And I think that is a fitting quote for us to kind of continue to keep in mind as we advocate and as we collectively come together as a community to truly share these historical systemic issues that we're trying to tackle. Let's see our students as who they are and not who the world wants them to be. Let's break down barriers, let's continue to work together in a collegial collaborative manner to address these issues because our students deserve it. So congratulations again to Ms. Stock. And just in closing, as Mr. Fakethal alluded to, and as the state stands up its three workgroups, we have begun our process in terms of Red Clay's roadmap to reopening. We've formed five workgroups to provide not only expertise but stakeholder input around district operations, school operations, health and wellness, governance, and instruction. The meetings began last week just as a preliminary framework to get our footing under us. And more additional information will be coming soon on redclayschools.com/reopening. Again, we are monitoring the state task force, a survey is in development. As we know, a lot of our families are still apprehensive with the uncertainty around COVID-19. And again, as Mr. Fakethal alluded to, as well as our staff members making sure that we adhere to the proper guidance in maintaining safety, the health, and well-being of our community. And so we'll have ongoing updates to staff, families, and our communities throughout the summer. A notice did go out today in terms of summer support. We will have remote learning opportunities online available to our students. We will continue with high school credit recovery courses online, and summer deals will continue across the district through August the 6. We are also working with community partners and then internally with our district to really look at supports for mitigating learning loss that we know many, if not all of our students were experiencing through COVID-19. Again, but these are some of the summer resources and summer supports that are made available and will be available throughout the summer to our Red Clay community. And with that, Madam President, I believe that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Green, any questions for Mr. Green? Hearing none, we will move on to items submitted by the board. So board members, can you let me know who has items to submit and we'll order the turns for speaking?
Something to say.
What, did you say something, Ashley?
I said that I have something at some point.
I do too, anybody else?
I have something.
Jose, Mr. Matthews, anybody else?
I have something, and I can either say it now or I can say it when we talk about the law enforcement resolution.
Well, we can do it either way, so there's four of us at this point, anybody else?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so who wants to go first? I mean, I'm happy to, or I'll go in any order. We have, we have Ashley, Kathy, Jose, Adriana, and Jason.
My opinion regards to the resolution, so I don't know if that matters, the order you want?
No, go ahead, you can go ahead. How about we do it in that order? Ashley will go first, I'll go second, Jose will go third, Adriana fourth, and Jason last, is that okay? Okay.
So while we should be aware and informed of the issues in other districts and areas regarding SROs, these issues are rather irrelevant when making policy decisions that impact SROs in Red Clay. The data and information that matters unequivocally is what takes place in Red Clay. So before we drastically change policy for our district, we need to ask questions like, are Red Clay SROs and constables increasing the school-to-prison pipeline for our schools as suggested? And what data backs this statement? Is the systemic racial issues that exist in areas actually ones that, one that exists in Red Clay? And if so, is it made worse by having SROs and constables? What data backs the suggestion that having state troopers patrolling our halls intimidates students and creates an unsafe learning environment? Has data been analyzed at schools such as AI Middle, which went from having a constable to having a state trooper that shows students felt more intimidated and unsafe with the addition of a state trooper? If anecdotal evidence of the positive relationships and work done by SROs and constables is not sufficient to show the benefits, then why is anecdotal evidence about overly aggressive SROs outside of Red Clay sufficient to paint the role as one that incites violence? The National Association of School Resource Officers states that SROs should serve multiple roles and contribute to the safe school team by ensuring a safe and secure environment, educating students about law-related topics, and mentoring students as counselors and role models. A survey conducted by the NASRO showed more than 90% of officers avert between one and 25 violent acts in an average school unit. About 70% report they have direct contact with 31 or more students a day, while 30% interact closely with 100 or more students. Of those surveyed, 93% spent time counseling students. 70% of SROs surveyed said that they think elected officials do not understand their role. SROs choose to work in the schools because they want to invest in the lives of kids. They want the opportunity to build relationships with students, to have the opportunity to counsel and support them. They see it as a form of community policing. SROs are not overriding the school discipline process or removing school staff and administration from the process. They are rarely arresting on the spot. School staff go through the de-escalation strategies before ever calling the SRO, and when the SRO arrives, they work on de-escalation strategies as well, strategies they receive specific training in. This past school year, there were 66 arrests. This makes up 2% of all student referrals, in-school suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions. At one middle school, there were only four arrests, two involved knives being brought to school and another related to terroristic threats involving gun violence at the school. These arrests would have still taken place even if there was no SRO on campus, because police would have had to have been called. Earlier in the year, I had the pleasure of spending time with each of the SROs and constables at our schools and also talking to A.J. Knoll about how the district works to keep our students safe. After that, I took the time to visit schools, spending time with students, and observing the SROs and constable interactions with students. The following are some of the stories that I either heard from staff and students, the SRO and constables, or even witnessed. An SRO taught a young man how to tie his tie for the championship basketball game because he didn't have anyone at home to help him. An SRO gave clothes she no longer needed or wore to students she was building relationships with, much to their excitement. An SRO heard kids talking about going to college and how they wouldn't because people in their family didn't, and that they weren't good enough. The SRO brought in her college flag and gear to give to the students and told them they were absolutely good and smart enough to go to college as a dream big. A student who didn't feel he fit in or that he would amount to anything asked to shadow an SRO at school. The SRO allowed the student to shadow him and ended up spending substantial time with the student, to the point the student now wants to be a police officer. An SRO created a lunch group for kids to build relationships with the SRO and each other. It came out that one of the students had never had a birthday party. So to his surprise, the SRO planned a party for the student, which included lunch and a cake, and the first present from a peer he had ever received. An SRO planned an event to have all the state police special units like K-9, motorcycle, helicopter, mounted patrol come and show all the different roles and opportunities there are with the police, and to show the police in a different light than they might have seen in the past. An SRO sees his role as a way to establish rapport with kids, especially at the middle school age group, to build strong, healthy relationships with police and students. As a previous special ed teacher, he sees his role as one to build trust and relationships with kids, to be a confidant and a person they can rely on. Multiple SROs coach sports or tutor students as volunteers and do not get paid overtime for doing so. After a student stormed out of a building, the school SRO followed him to help him calm off. He found a baseball during the walk, and they ended up having a catch for a while, so the student could cool off. The student was not put in cuffs and arrested, but rather he was able to return to class, formed a relationship with the SRO as someone he could trust and go to. They have given rides on the kids who missed the bus or whose parents were unable to do so last minute. Do our students and even teachers need more mental health support in schools? Absolutely, without a doubt. Even as the district with the largest number of psychologists, our students would benefit from more social, emotional support in the schools. Mental health access as a whole in Delaware is lacking, and greater networks are needed. However, rather than seeing SROs and constables detrimental to mental health and removing them, we should work to strengthen their partnership and the positive role they can have in students' lives. When incidents of teachers having inappropriate sexual relations with students are uncovered, the cry is not to remove teachers from schools. When cases of doctors such as Earl Bradley from Lewis, Delaware, who molested, raped, and exploited over 100 patients ages three months and up are discovered, the cry is not to remove all doctors. When nurses are found to have purposely overdosed elderly patients at nursing homes to end their lives, the cry is not to end the nursing profession. But rather, when incidents like these arise, the roles are reviewed, the data is analyzed, and safeguards or changes are implemented as needed. Additional training is conducted, places where breakdown and concerns happen are modified and corrected. I support the role of our SROs and constables, but I also know there's always room for growth in education. As we train educators and support staff on things like implicit bias, systemic racism, social and emotional health factors through our Office of Equity and Strategic Partnership, let's include our SROs and constables. Rather than seeing them as part of the problem or even the problem, let's join with their willingness to create stronger partnerships and relationships that students benefit from. Instead of going zero to 100, we need to take logical steps, not make knee-jerk reactions. We need to see what is really happening in Red Clay and make necessary changes from there, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go next, and I have a couple of committee reports and then a couple of motions. So I attended the reopening schools meeting on May 28 via Zoom. The meeting consisted solely of introduction and focus on principles. The plan is to open schools safely, and they want a robust plan, once they get the go-ahead to open by the governor. They want to be transparent, equitable, they want to listen, put safety first, and be decisive, and they want all input. They're using a company called Opportunity Labs to assist them. Recommendations will be made by early July. The meetings are open to everyone, they're on the Delaware Public Meetings Calendar. Health and Wellness Meetings are on Tuesdays from 5 to 7. Academic Equity is on Wednesday from 5 to 7. Operation and Services are on Thursdays from 5 to 7. And any ideas can be provided by phone, 302-735-4244, or on the, online, by the web. There is a website, reopeningideas@doe.k12.de.us, and anyone is, I welcome anybody to input their ideas. I attended the DSBA Legislative Meeting on June 5 via Zoom. We reviewed the previous positions on House and Senate bills. The General Assembly is expected to finalize the budget only this term, with very little other legislative activity. We are working hard to get the General Assembly to focus on HB 145, which would provide a mid-year unit count, which is essential to our budget, but I doubt that that will happen. DFAC revenue projections and FY '21 budget. There's a $455.5 million deficit, although I read today that they just found 88.2 million more. So the deficit is 88.2 million less than that. Mike Jackson indicated that there were no additional givebacks this year, and next year, the plan is to remove only previously budgeted enhancement, except for unit count growth, which will continue, and transportation formula enhancements. There will be no funding for early childhood programs. Bond bill is no longer available, and payroll steps are likely to be frozen as our raises unless some threshold is triggered. Although maybe this additional 88 million changes that, and I put in that question recently. A revenue trigger may be in place to fund or not fund steps. Opportunity grants continue, which is good news for us. The DSBA has a representative on reopening schools' Operation and Services subgroup, Leoni Wright from Indian River. As I mentioned, anybody can attend. There were interesting questions that were raised, many of which I believe we need to consider if we haven't already, such as- consider if we haven't already, such as, do we need to revise dress codes due to COVID to permit face masks? And is there going to be any type of regulation on the face masks that are going to be permitted? Members like DSBA members like Zoom meeting ability, and they want the General Assembly to permit Zoom to continue to be an available technology for future board meetings even when the state of emergency is over. There is a House bill introduced in this regard, but it likely may not get any traction this year due to the budget being pretty much the only thing being attended to. They also raised the issue of, do we need to review the Code of Conduct regarding remote instruction and cyber instruction learning interactions? I thought that was an acceptable, I mean, an interesting concept. Also looking at acceptable use and remote learning policies to see whether or not we need to make any changes to those, as well as attendance policies, meaning what is attendance in a remote environment? And should we be back remotely in the fall? Do we need to be more circumscribed about what that is? So I thought there were a fair amount of good questions that were raised to be considered. DSBA forwarded letters to our congressional delegation to ask for more flexibility on CARES Act money, to backfill potential revenue losses to support K-12 state budget, but we haven't heard anything more from that. I then attended the DSBA Board of Directors meeting with Jason on June 10 via Zoom. It is good to note that the DSBA is financially sound, which is good because a couple of years ago, they were very financially unsound, and I believe the DSBA provides a good amount of value to all school boards in the state in terms of letting us know what the current legislation is, really setting forth opinions and enabling us to discuss issues with other board members statewide. It's a convenient forum and it's very helpful. Board Docs is coming out with a new product in the next several years. It's Board Docs Community that combines what we currently do with Zoom meetings, hosting agendas, and public notices and open meeting laws. It will be a remote platform for public meetings, so that should be interesting. The only must-have legislation that the DSBA considers important this year is what I just mentioned, which is the mid-year unit count, and it includes all unit growth, not just student population growth. Kevin Fitzgerald, the chief at Caesar Rodney, believes it will not pass this year as nothing with a fiscal note, meaning additional funding is passing, but we'll see. The chief's report, and Jill talked about this at the CFRC as well, the distribution of CARES Act money. DOE will hold back twenty percent of that money to ensure that we're meeting the private parochial school obligations. Money like this is typically distributed based on Title I students, not on student count, and this money is being distributed based on population. It's a significant increase for private schools and obviously a significant decrease for public schools. Private schools stand to receive much greater amounts if it's distributed by population. This issue is being contested on several fronts. It means a lot of funds are going to private schools that are really faring very well in this pandemic. Everyone is talking to legislatures about it to see if we can go back to the more normal distribution. The difference is millions of dollars. Dr. Marinucci reported that he's recently filed a bill, SB 243, to allow for distance or remote meetings after the state of emergency is lifted. Dr. Marinucci indicated that he'd seen the bill, but it hasn't analyzed it yet for a possible DSBA legislative position, but it's unlikely it's going to be advanced because it was introduced June 10. And it's just difficult this year, given COVID. But it is something to consider because we are getting a lot greater attendance at our school board meetings, given Zoom. Although I will say that I think it is really beneficial to be in person. I think there's, while I love Zoom, I think we miss a little bit in terms of the interaction. So it'll be interesting to see what happens. Graduations were fantastic, as I mentioned earlier. Thank you to everyone in Red Clay who made them happen. I think the board is entirely proud that we really honored our seniors, and I've attended many, many graduations, and these all felt very special and almost like in-person graduations. So thank you for all of the hard work that everyone in Red Clay put into this. I attended the CFRC, the Community Financial Review Committee, on June 9. The district is in a good place financially, at least in as good a place as it can be at this time. Revenues are at ninety-eight percent and expenses at eighty-nine point four. It's a good place to be, especially given the current situation in the state. We are notating all expenses related to COVID-19 so that we will know for stimulus and other reports and be able to set that off versus stimulus. Governor Carney revised his budget, and the JFC is meeting. There is no additional giveback for this year. Next year, as I mentioned, there's a $455.5 million hole, although, like I said, we just received a report that they found $88.2 million, so the hole is probably a little less. It's being plugged by not funding new programs, pausing raises, pausing steps unless a threshold or trigger is met, and eliminating discretionary funding. The budget must be in place by 6:30, so we will all know. Okay, what our budget situation will be like. Now I have three motions that I want to make, okay? The first, you know, I firmly believe that each and every member of this board is on the board to do the best for all students, each and every one of our students. Since this board is responsible for setting the direction of the district through policy and hiring the superintendent, I will move, and I will move at the next meeting, and it'll be in play in the next meeting, that we hold a board workshop to review our policies to ensure that they support and align to our beliefs about fairness and equity for all and that they are anti-racist, or whether they advocate racist philosophy in treatment, and whether we need any additional policies or any modification of the policies. And I would like this effort to be led by our Diversity Office. I recognize that this is but a first step in our journey, but one that is necessary given our job. So I will make that motion at the next meeting, and I'm putting everybody on notice now. I do have to say something about SROs and constables, and I will make a motion. It is an important time right now because Black Lives Matter, and it is really important that we treat everyone, Black and Brown children as well, equitably and fairly. I am not smart enough to figure this out alone, and I know we have a community, a community with vastly different views. My knowledge, this is the first time this issue has really been raised, and we have received lots and lots of input since this motion was submitted from a broad sector of Red Clay residents and employees. We received many today, thank you very much. We've received a number of emails. I have received lots of communications, calls, and texts from constituents, all voicing very, very different concerns about this. I do believe we need to be deliberate in understanding this issue and the data in Red Clay, and we must have a conversation about it and obtain information from all our stakeholders in order to make an appropriate decision for Red Clay. This is a huge and controversial issue for Red Clay, and whenever we, as a board, have had a big controversial issue, we involve our community and create an advisory committee under Board Policy 9004 to get community and public input. As I mentioned, I've received numerous calls, some claiming that SROs and constables build good relationships in schools, are another counselor in schools, and are often the one to whom students go over teachers and administration. We've heard contrary ones tonight, and we've received emails to the contrary as well. I know the safety and health and well-being of our students, staff, and community is critical. It is really our first obligation in the schools, and SROs and constables do play a role in that. During my time on the board, we have not had, we've not heard, I have not even heard of one incident that I'm aware of about an SRO or a constable being problematic with our students, staff, and community. In fact, the opposite has been true, resounding support for the work they do and our staff in the buildings perform. In addition, we have to understand the consequences of any decision. There are potential safety issues, and they could indeed be even more arrests as there could be increased 911 calls. They are public, and my understanding is arrests often occur with 911 calls. But again, we need input. The resolution does not set forth information applicable to Red Clay and the SROs and constables in Red Clay, and I believe we need that information to make an informed decision. The job of the school board is to set the direction of the district through policy. Our policies always point to the fact that we obtain public input. Just look at Board Policy 9001, 9002, 1005, 2006, et cetera. We have done this and engaged the community when we had any big issue in the district, such as inclusion, attendance zones, hiring the superintendent, looking at magnet admissions, and the list goes on. This issue is even bigger than those and involves everyone in the community. We live in an age where safety is first and foremost in the minds of many parents and the community and the SROs and constables, or our first attempt at safety, and promised through a referendum. If we are to change anything, we need to get input from all before taking a school altering them. In addition, I don't believe this is an either-or issue. The facts of student needs for mental health supports and the lack of funding thereof was identified by WIEC as being severely underfunded at the state level. This board recognized that and understood that, and our board, unlike other boards in the state, took the issue under its wing, and we significantly increased the tuition tax in order to ensure we had a psychologist and an educational diagnostician in each and every one of our schools. We did that because we knew that psychologists were important, mental health was important in schools. So Red Clay, and there are many school districts in our state that will not touch match tax, referendum tax, any of those taxes where they can match. Red Clay also recognizes the safety issue, and in the last referendum, asked for voter support for increasing constables in schools, and we won that support. The state police contract was just signed. We knew about it, and we supported it in December 2018, and I am not certain that it is terminable at this point. Thus, I move that we form an advisory committee involving all stakeholders to study, among other things, what the job of the SROs and the constables is, what they do, how they've performed, what type of training they receive, whether other or additional training is needed, how they are perceived in Red Clay by students and parents, whether Red Clay students feel less safe when SROs and constables are present in schools, whether having SROs and constables in Red Clay schools significantly negatively impact student achievement, whether Red Clay student safety increases or decreases with the presence of SROs and constables in our schools, whether the presence of police in schools is associated with higher rates of suspension and/or arrest in Red Clay and greater racial disparity in suspension and/or arrest rates, whether the presence of SROs and constables in our Red Clay schools contribute to the criminalization of students of color and students with disabilities. And we need the data on arrests and suspensions to determine if the presence of SROs and constables in our school is the cause of any such racial and disability disparity. We need lots of inputs from students, educators, RCA, community members, principals, assistant principals, public comment. I would like A.J. Knoll, our Director of Safety, to be heavily involved, as well as Dr. Tawanda Bond, our Diversity Officer. I would also like Jill Floray, our CFO, to be involved because we will need to know about input on issues relating to our SRO contract, whether that money can even be used to provide mental health supports, and whether the state provides additional funding for mental health supports. But public comment must be obtained so that we, as a board, can make an appropriate decision. So that's my second motion. And the third, we elect officers each year in July as a board, under Board Policy 2000, I believe it's under 2006. However, with the, or maybe it's four, 2004. However, with the school board election being moved to July 21 due to COVID, I question whether we should not move the election to August, which will be after new members are elected. Two seats are up for election this cycle. Seven districts have already made this move, so I move that Red Clay elections for officers be postponed from July 2022, August 2020 meeting, so that the two new members will have a voice in the selection of officers for the upcoming school. That's the end of my comments, and I believe next is Jose.
Hi, good evening. I have so much, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. I have so much I want to say tonight about the action item that Adriana and I have proposed. Please know that this is a decision neither of us has made lightly, and we know that emotions are going to be aroused on both sides. But I want to share my experience with you. As a young Latinx student who attended public schools throughout my K-12 career, never once did I have an armed officer or constable in one of my schools because it's a school. While I freely admit the challenges and complexities of today's society have generated law enforcement presence in some of our schools, I'm always left scratching my head, wondering if we can provide students access to more counselors, social workers, and mental health supports in our schools so police presence wouldn't be so necessary. As a person of color, I say this with all respect in the world to my white friends, family members, and constituents. You have to realize that this level of distrust between law enforcements and communities of color have been brewing for centuries. The murder of George Floyd has only brought those issues to the surface after decades of them bubbling up. We know we have many Black and Brown students in this district and even many white students who do not feel safe and welcome with law enforcement in our schools. We have got to create environments where all students can feel welcome, even if that means our own personal comfort is disrupted. I look forward to debate on this topic. I hope during the action item next month, all board members will speak up and share their thoughts. I also hope the community will remain engaged, that respectful engagement, hopefully, will move our community towards recognizing that marginalized voices, long ignored, need to be heard. Thank you all for participating tonight.
Okay, and I believe Dr. Bohm is next.
Before I begin my remarks, I just wanted to thank the audience for coming out and talking and participating. I love the fact that over our Zoom meetings, we have so many participants, and it's just wonderful to hear so many different voices. And I feel that in this meeting, we had a lot of young people's voices, and I'm just very excited to have all these young members, college students, and people in high school who are participating. In the wake of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor's murders, America and the Red Clay School Board is faced with the reality of systemic racism and the use of police to oppress Brown and Black people. We see uprisings in every state. Americans are in full revolt. Young people across the country have taken to the street demanding the end to policing as we know it, and numerous school boards across the nation have terminated their contracts with law enforcement. It is precisely because we are concerned with student and employee safety that we believe it is necessary to have the difficult conversation of removing law enforcement from our schools. The data clearly indicate that armed police in schools make schools less safe for many children, but especially students who are Black and Brown and who have special needs and are labeled spec ed. That is true in Delaware, that is true in Red Clay, that is true in Wilmington, and it is true all across the country. The data is irrefutable. We know that policing, mass incarceration, and the carceral state are failed enterprises. They are relic of the past. If we divest in school police, now we can actually begin to reallocate those funds to truly protect our children and educators and staff and administrators by providing support for students at the front end when they begin to demonstrate the need for help. What if we reimagined education? Paying close attention to intent, sorry, paying close intentional attention to the systemic racism which impacts all aspects of student learning, achievement, and success. For instance, we could use the funds for hiring highly-trained professionals such as social workers, counselors, community interventionists, and trauma-informed mental health experts. We could commit to valuing inclusion over exclusion. We could commit to valuing inclusion over exclusion, social engagement over control and authority, accountability over punishment, due process over a rush to judgment, and individual and group-based growth and rehabilitation over suspension, expulsion, alternative placement, and the school-to-prison pipeline. In this moment when the nation, and actually the entire world, is forced to face the racism which exists in every facet of our lives and institutions, as two people on the school board have been saying for a very long time, let us not look away because we are fearful at board members, because we are uncomfortable to do something different and creative, and because this Red Clay School Board is committed to an old way and an old tradition and an old model of doing things. Let us resist in our hearts, our inclination to continue business as usual. Let us rise up as a board and be brave. Let us act to change because we know in Red Clay we can do better, and we know our students and our educators and our administrators and our staff are worth it. Let us listen to our youth. Our young people are blazing a path across the nation, demanding justice, saying, "We are tired. We have had enough. We are not going to do this anymore." Let us be brave and create a blueprint that is humanitarian, one that actually works, one which does not criminalize our children and set them up for failure. The Red Clay School Board has had difficult conversations in the past, and we've had conversations about race and racism. And we have risen on a number of occasions to the challenge of fighting against injustice in our schools. For instance, we voted to rename a school and get rid of a racist mascot. We were the first district in the state to have an equity office and an equity officer. These are things we should be proud of, and in our future as a board, there are more things we can advocate for and be proud of. It is my hope that the Red Clay School Board will continue its commitment to justice and equity by voting to remove law enforcement from our schools and to commit to fund our students, our staff, our educators, and our administrators so we can truly protect them and our larger community. We need an educational model that recognizes the community of all of our children. The time to act is now. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Casper, I think you're up next.
Okay, well, over the past week, I did, or since the last meeting, I did attend the facilities meeting and by Ted Ammon and Martian, and there was a lot of discussion on the, what has been done in preparation for the opening of school, if it gets to that point. There's been a lot of preparation done to the buildings, and it sounds as though, from the conversations that were, that were had on Monday evening, that Red Clay is probably more prepared than any other district, as people are kind of sitting back waiting to hear what the next move is, whereas Ted, Martian, and their team have been being proactive and really, you know, making sure that supplies are on hand and ordered in plenty of time so that if we get to that point where we can open the doors, whatever that schedule looks like, that we are prepared to, you know, make sure that the schools are sanitized and clean and safe for staff and students. So kudos to that team. Kathy, you already touched base on the SBA stuff. Graduations that I watched last week were, it was the first, it's just kind of weird, you know, the first time since I've been on the board that I haven't attended every single live graduation, so being able to watch it from the comfort of my own home was unique. It was different. So, you know, the one thing I would say is, the class of 2020, you guys are the first to ever have graduation like this, and I've had to tell my own daughter the same thing. You know, it's a uniqueness that nobody else is going to be able to share, or nobody else is going to be able to own that, but the class of 2020. So congratulations to all of our graduates, which you know all well, in your future endeavors. In regards to the, to the proposed resolution, the, I come with a very, very unique perspective as somebody who works in public education. I work in a, in a district. So I have, I have a really unique perspective as an educator, and I've seen the, the SROs and the powerful relationship. Darrell, you said something earlier in the meeting about it's all about relation, or you said something about it's all about having those relationships. And there was a gentleman that I worked with at a funeral home for years, and he always used to say, it was his coined phrase, "It's all about relationships." And I use that phrase all the time with my own students because life is all about relationships, the relationships you form. And, you know, in the subject matter that I teach, oftentimes I get kids that are afraid, they're afraid of cars, they're afraid to drive, they're afraid of the fear of having the accident. And it's my job as an educator to prepare the students to the best that I can to overcome that fear. And I've listened to the numerous public comments this evening from various members of the community, the schools. I've had people text and email me and call me and talk about, you know, their experiences. And for students to have a fear or be traumatized by law enforcement, I think it's our responsibility to form a positive relationship-building venue for students to see law enforcement not as a threat, but as a community servant. I think it'd be a great idea for our, our constables and SROs to go through some additional training. We're doing it as educators, we're going through additional trainings. There's just so much that, that we can do in building those relationships and bridging that divide in the community. I just think that it's just a, an important responsibility that we have, an awesome responsibility that we have, and as educators, that's part of our duty. And now, where I sit this evening as a board member and setting policy, I think it's part of our duty, but I also feel that there's an awesome responsibility on our end to make sure that our schools, our students, our staff are kept safe. And I think that with some additional training, I mean, somebody has said it earlier, many people have said it, instead of being, you know, one or the other, it should be, you know, an and, both. We need more mental health resources in the schools. That is a given. We're fortunate in Red Clay that we have so many already, and we can still use more. But we also need the aspect of public safety in our schools. And as a parent, as a community member, as an educator, as a board member, I just think it's, it's one of the responsibilities that we just can't take lightly. And although there's a lot of, there's a lot of emotions running high right now, I don't think a reactive, and I don't mean that in a negative way, I just don't think a reactive resolution is the answer. I think there needs to be some, some reform, some changes, some education, some training so that we can just be the best. I think we are the best district, and I mean that wholeheartedly, but I think we can, there's room to be better. And I think that if we can implement these changes and these reforms and this education and training, I think that we can help bridge that divide. It's our responsibility to make sure that students are coming to school and feeling comfortable and feeling safe. And in the, in the real, we got to prepare our kids for the real world, and in the real world, we have to deal with law enforcement. And I think that's our responsibility to bring that into the school as well, to really introduce a forum where students can feel comfortable. So I do, you know, I don't want to just squash the idea like it's a bad idea, I just, I don't think it's the best idea. I think we can do better by implementing training and some more dialogue. So it could be an interesting meeting next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Kathy, I have a couple of questions.
Sure thing. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's fair.
Okay.
Dr. Bohm and Mr. Matthews. So this is a change from what was originally proposed. You guys are asking for what we normally do, which is propose it one month and then vote on it the next month. Am I correct?
Jose and I, and I have worked with a number of community members in creating the resolution, and at the behest of the community, people would like to vote on it next month.
Okay, because that's normally what we do. I just wanted to make sure that that's what you were proposing.
Well, just like America is in crisis over COVID, people of color are in crisis over racism, and now is the time to act swiftly. And surely, we have waited three, 400 years to get rid of policy which is detrimental to Black and Brown bodies, and the continuing request by members of the dominant group to wait and wait and wait and wait and wait is tiresome at this point.
Adriana, that's not what I was saying. I was only simply asking whether you wanted to vote it on this month or if you were waiting to have it voted on next month. So from what you're telling me is that you guys are fine with, the proposal that you have up on the table right now is that it was to be discussed tonight and voted on next month, which is currently our practice.
Yes, it is an affirmative item this evening, and it's up to vote at the July board meeting.
Okay. My second question is, Mr. Green, could you bring back to us next month what your recommendation is from your team? And then secondly, whether, I would like to know if these funds can be converted to mental health professionals? So if we, if the contracts come out, because having worked in the districts, as you well know, so can Jill give us, what is the situation? Can we get out the contracts?
So there's only one contract, and that's with Delaware State Police. Our constables are Red Clay employees. And again, that was as part of the previous referendum to provide additional safety and security to the schools. So the constables are Red Clay employees, and there's only one contract with Delaware State Police.
So the question that remains is, can we convert the funds? And if so, what does the conversion look like and what would that mean we would be able to hire? If anything. So what do we, what are we talking about in dollars and cents, and what are we talking about in terms of people? I want a definite number on what does that mean?
And we will do our best to try to get the board the affirmation that they desire before next month's board meeting.
And then I want to know what the team recommendation is too. If we move away from SROs in the schools, do the schools have concerns? And if so, how are we going to deal with that gap? And what is, and what, what is your team recommending? Or do they feel like mental health counselors are going to, you know, if we put more school psychologists in place, social workers, what are we going to do? And, and Mr. Green, this is your background.
Right, and so I would just generally say, you know, with each employee group, we can go through, whether it be our custodians, our school psychologists, special educators, general educators, everyone will always feel like we could use more. The idea is just not necessarily adding more, it's how does more interact with our children and our communities. I think this is a broader context of conversation also, and I've heard many people talk about community intervention support. I think that's a much-needed resource because there is a disconnect between the communities that our children live in and where they actually go to school each day. And I say that with all sincerity because I know each of our educators, they wake up with the desire to impact children's lives in a positive way. And we are a country divided, you know, we're divided on face masks, whether you're out in the community right now and whether you wear a mask or you don't wear a mask. It really behooves us, and I would just challenge you as a seven-member board, as you direct the district, in terms of whether you support this policy or not, the issues aren't going to go away. So the reality of the situation that we're confronted with, with a leadership standpoint, and I think about teaching kindergarten, and oftentimes when we teach kindergarten is we give them the perception of who community helpers are, and what does it mean to be a community helper? And so we'll talk about doctors, we'll talk about mail carriers, we'll talk about police officers, fire, various people who make up that community. And most often, that's in theory, not realizing that the impact that some of who we perceive to be community helpers are, aren't necessarily seen in the eyes of certain communities to be community helpers. And I shared this with our staff and with my cabinet. I got my first library card as a result of a police encounter. I was 11 years old, and I had an unfortunate situation where I was signaled out for doing something other than walking in my own neighborhood. And fortunately enough for me, I had my father who basically stated to me that if I can't present who I am, I run the risk of other people defining who I am. And I'm from the state of Maryland, and at that time, you could actually get a photo ID with your library card. So two things happened after that. I got a library card with my photo ID, so from the age of 11, I had to carry photo ID, and I've carried it ever since, and also memorized my social security number. And I say all of that just to say that we are dealing with some systems and things that unless you go through it, you don't realize and you don't understand it. And right now, there's a lot of passion, there's a lot of feelings, there's a lot of emotions that are resonating throughout our community. I've also had some of the most positive experiences in schools and being a school leader and working with law enforcement. And I've always seen, based on my own personal experience, because I wanted to be a police officer, but I always harbored that experience and feel like I would be doing something other than what my community would actually feel was something that was supportive to them. And so we do have to serve as a bridge. I see myself as a bridge. It's not necessarily being neutral. Do we have policies and things that distort and promote disproportionality? Yes, but it's not a both and, I mean, excuse me, it's not either/or, it is a both and in the sense that we have to help our community heal. Our children spend more waking hours with us, and based on the testimonies and things that we've heard today, I just behoove the board to come together, and if you feel like you're rushed to vote, then get the information that you need so that we can maintain the number one priority that we have in schools, which is to promote the health, safety, and well-being of our students, our staff, and our families. But more importantly, we deal with the underlying trauma that many of our children are experiencing, deal with the underlying hurt that our communities are feeling. But we're also responsible for educating. And one would say that, you know, the best lesson or knowledge is learning, everything else is information. And so we can pull out all the statistics, regardless of what side you're on, it's still going to result in action. And that action is how our students look at us as the adults, the leaders within this school district, to coalesce and come together to make the best decisions on behalf of them, and not necessarily just their future, but today. So I'm committed to doing that, but I don't think we can do it at the exclusion of anybody who would identify in a kindergarten lesson as a member of our community. We have to do it in concert with that, understanding that there has to be some level of some hard decisions that have to get made on either side of it, but we have to do it on the best end. And again, ensuring that we promote the health, safety, and well-being by being conscious about what that ultimately means to each demographic, geographic region that represents Red Clay. We are the microcosm of the nation. So we have some work ahead of us, but I just ask the board to remain committed. I thank the community for coming out and expressing their viewpoints in such a professional, heartfelt manner, but we still need that same engagement ongoing and ensuring that not everyone is going to get everything out of what they have come to the table with, but we owe it to our students and to our community to continue to work together to provide a better today and tomorrow for our children and families because that's what they're counting on us to do.
And, and that's well said, Darrell. One of the things, you know, we had great input tonight, and I'm just wondering, will we be prepared as a board to vote on something like this next month? You know, while I had a lot of text messages going on as well, you know, they talk about social workers and county are extremely valuable, they're, they're not trained to perform in practice in SRO. You know, I'm just looking at... You know, I'm just looking at different things. Let's never forget our past. Do what's right for our future of our children. Honestly, when I look at our board and all our different focuses and reaching the students, did not participate in the online learning, you know, just at Lewis, you know. Some of the students didn't show up at all. Will they be ready for first grade? Think about it, you know, we're talking about the pipeline to prison, but some of these kids are being affected because of all different types of things, even in Red Clay. You know, and, and we did not see the pandemic coming. And we don't know where it's going to go. We don't know how the fall is going to hit us. You know, I'm just wondering, to say that we're ready to throw the SROs out of school and constables, I, I have to agree that there is a lot of more training that could be done to help make this thing work. I'm just speaking. As a board, are we ready to say no? Is the reallocations, and you just talked about it, and we talked, heard about Jill and bringing her involved, and knowing that the funding is clearly going to be put on social workers, psychologists. It's just so much the phantom in less than 30 days that we're going to do and give this answer. Even with the mask time, and we dealt with it for more than months, one month, two months, three months. We're talking about a life-changing situation. Parents that want to feel that their kids are in a safe place. I'm throwing it out there. So it'll give us food for thought, things to think about, more things to communicate with, you know. I'm just putting my two cent in there.
So obviously, members of the board will continue to work with the board to get you whatever information to make in a form vote, but I will say that, again, our staff are communicate, are committed, as we have been, to continue to support our schools, to support our families, to do the work that's necessary on behalf of our children. I think the dog is trying to tell us something.
My dog misses me.
My dog is well-behaved.
Glad someone is.
This misses me more than your dog misses you, Jason.
Mine's locked upstairs, or I should say, shut upstairs.
Okay, so I think we're at the end of the meeting. And if I'm right, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I've moved.
From Ms. Sabo, is there a second?
Second.
From Mr. Casper, was that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Maria, you might want to take a roll call vote on this, please.
Roll call vote on adjournment? Dr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Nonetheless, this vote, motion carried.
So thank you very much, Tony and Maria, again, for keeping us on track. Thank you to everyone in the community for coming out. Thank you, board members and staff, and we will see you next month.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.